Good evening everyone and thank you for joining us for our August 27th Board Meeting. I'd like to call to order, and we begin with our flag salute. Mr. Raphael Guzman has graciously offered to, well accepted being asked to lead us. All rise please.
Please rise, place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Before we get started, I would like to have a moment... Before we get started, I would like to have a moment of silence for victims in the conflict in Israel, and any victims in many of the conflicts that are going on across this planet. If I could have a moment of silence, thank you. Thank you. Can I get a motion for the approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion.
I make a motion for the approval of the agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, agenda is approved. Any report of closed session?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Stern. There were three items that were voted on in closed session. The board has voted three to zero to approve the settlement for case number 232-8063-2024-2025. The board has voted three to zero to approve the settlement for case 1923109-2024-2025. And the board has voted three to zero to approve the settlement for case number 22STCV03319.
Thank you, Dr. Breggy. We're now moving into agenda, public, the agenda hearing period for public comment. I'd like to please call up Gabriel Levy. Sorry, Gabrielle, and you have three minutes.
Good evening, dear board, oh. Dear board member, dear Dr. Breggy, dear Dr. Seaman, Mr. Walters, thank you for hearing me tonight. My name is Gabrielle Levy. I have two children, one in BHHS and one in BVMS, in eighth grade. We are really grateful, and we've always been, to be part of Beverly Hills District that is always promoting excellence in education. Last year, my son Joshua had the opportunity to start Hebrew Language 1A. We were so happy that finally Hebrew Language was offered, like the other foreign language, as a complete pathway. The goal for my son was to finish the first session in middle school, and then accumulate three more years of Hebrew in high school, and eventually, in senior year, do AP Hebrew. So Joshua enrolled to Hebrew as an elective this year. We haven't received any communication either at the end of the year or during the summer that the program was canceled. On orientation day, we found out that Josh's schedule didn't include Hebrew anymore. Joshua needs the same language for two years, otherwise he will lose a year like all the other kids from the four different classes that enrolled to the program last year. The class online that would give them a credit is expensive, and it's not for everyone. My son doesn't perform well online, unfortunately. It is really difficult to hear at the beginning of the second year that the Hebrew class was a pilot or a trial. I think the district has amazing teachers and attracts many others that would love to teach in the district. In most great colleges, it is asked to have done three to four years of foreign language. So I'm please asking you to please reinstall, reinstate, sorry, Hebrew, either during regular hours or provide an alternative solution after school, maybe with the high school teacher, so the kids have a chance to obtain the credit and be able, like all the other students, to complete this pathway. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to call up Pamela Kohanchi. Is Pamela here? Okay, we will come back. Nikki Shamsi. Nikki, you have six minutes, seated time from Debbie Novell.
Sorry, I'm still preparing. I have been on the Wellness Committee since April 2022, along with a few other parents, district staff, and advisors, as well as our own board member, Mr. Noah Margot. What is the Wellness Committee, do you ask? It is an actual orient, it's an action-oriented advisory group that focuses on the health and well-being of students and staff. We provide advice, expertise, accountability, structured support, resources, and feedback to administrators, district, and public, such as parents, students, community members. And we work to evaluate with school health, evaluate the school health environment, programs and activities, and identify ways to strengthen these policies to improve health. Why have a school wellness committee? To inform stakeholders about work you're doing to improve health and academic success of students, ensure school wellness policy is being implemented. It enables health priorities and activities to truly reflect the needs and interests of the school. We review and assess current wellness policy, discuss ideas, and provide research, ideas, and input to the group. In short, it's a committee that decides what your child eats at school. I decided to join the committee as I am a healthcare professional with extensive background in health, nutrition, and the sciences. As an involved and concerned parent, I feel that I have a vested interest in my children's health and well-being. The parents on this committee offered many ways that our food services program could improve. We explored the ideas of cutting down on juice, white sugar, and simple carbs, and adding more whole foods, fresh fruit and vegetables. Unfortunately, and unbeknownst to yet so many BHUSD parents, your kids are still eating cereals full of sugar and artificial coloring, cinnamon buns, Doritos, donuts, processed foods, and drinking juice and chocolate milk, instead of clean proteins that provide sustenance that a child needs to be able to concentrate all day in a classroom and still have the energy to play sports after school. Furthermore, on many occasions, the schools have run out of food to serve at lunchtime, and the kids sometimes receive spoiled food, such as spoiled milk. We've brought in physicians, specialists, allergists, neurologists, and concerned parents to speak about the horrific end results of poor diets in children with regard to obesity, diabetes, cardiovascular diseases, infertility, and shorter life expectancies. To add fuel to the fire, the consulting nutritionist our district has hired still refers to the debunked 1980s food pyramid, and believes kids should eat six to 11 servings of bread, cereals, rice, and pasta. She is credentialed in diet and nutrition, yet she counts a carton of juice as a serving of fruit. Many children in our district come from families that struggle to afford proper, healthy food. This financial constraint often leads to reliance on cheaper, less nutritious options that can negatively impact a child's health, development, and academic performance. By supplementing their diet with two healthy meals a day at school, we are providing a critical service to these children who would otherwise be unable to access the nutrition they need. Not only does this initiative address food insecurity, but also ensures that all students, regardless of their family's financial situation, have the opportunity to thrive. Healthy meals are essential for cognitive function, energy levels, and overall well-being, all of which directly contribute to a child's ability to learn and succeed in school. Moreover, many parents in our district are deeply concerned about the quality of food that their children are consuming. They are increasingly aware of the negative effects of processed foods, which are often high in sugars and unhealthy additives. These parents are willing to contribute financially to ensure their children are not being served unhealthy processed foods. They understand that investing in nutritious meals now can prevent health issues down the line and foster better academic outcomes. By offering healthy, balanced meals, we are not just feeding our children, we are investing in the future. We are teaching them the importance of good nutrition and setting them up for a healthier, more successful life. Therefore, it is imperative that we continue and expand our efforts to provide these essential meals to all students in our district and make them healthy.
Thank you very much. Lisa Babcock. Is Lisa Babcock here?
I'm here.
Oh, hi. Okay. You have six minutes, seated time from Daphna Hollander.
Hello, everyone, this is not my first time speaking. I want to thank you for all of your meetings and always being open to listening to our concerns. So I want to start off by, let me pull it up. I want to thank Dr. Breggy and the entire board in their unwavering support in these dark times when members of our community, the Jewish community, is being forced to denounce their own identity, now more than ever, and having had representation in the district with an equitable pathway by offering Hebrew in the middle school to represent the overwhelming amount of families in our district that would enjoy taking Hebrew, not only as a language, but it also is representative of our vast majority of our community. We have a lot of people in the community, a lot of families are Jewish. That's not that important, but it does represent diversely and equitable to who our members of our community is, which most of the curriculum for all of the California schools has been offered in relation to representing the members that represent your community. A lot of the members that represent our community are Jewish. So I want to thank you for your unwavering support. I know that we've had letters of threats from CARE, which is a terrorist organization linked to many terror ties. We know that this organization hired a outside news media that this weekend came into our city and verbally attacked current students and alumni students that just graduated this past year. They also attacked parents verbally, and there's rampant antisemitism going. So I want to thank you for taking a trip to Israel, for becoming informed, standing up to us, for all of your wonderful statements. Okay, so I also want to talk about languages. So I was doing some research and looking at, I want to read this letter from the State Superintendent of Public Instruction and the State Board of Education. Students in the 21st century live in a global society. Organizations and businesses are multinational, and new professions are continually emerging. We want our students positioned for success, and that means being proficient in more than just core subjects. California, home to the most diverse student population in the country, is ready to expand opportunities for all students to acquire world languages. We want them to develop intercultural competence and become global citizens. This is from the 2019 World Languages Standards for the California Public Schools and the California Department of Public Education. So I just also wanted to read in that, it also says, "The passage of Proposition 58, Education for a Global Economy, in 2016 initiated a statewide effort to promote linguistic, global, and intercultural competency among California students." So this initiative is going to eventually go to 2030 Global California, and that's going to be a lead for K through 12 schools to support multilingualism for California's unique and diverse student population through access to world language programs, including a wide variety of languages, with multiple entry points from kindergarten through grade 12. And with this coming up for 2030, honoring Hebrew in the middle school program will help get us closer to Global California 2030. I also wanted to say that we, when my daughter came, she had the same expectation as the previous parent, that she was going to be receiving Hebrew. She took it the first year. We were on a path to take it two years to get her language out, so then she could go on to take it for honors in high school. Once again, I don't want to go over it, but we were not informed that the Hebrew program was dropped. And when we asked, there were also several parents there receiving their schedules at Beverly Vista, we were told that it was an administrative decision to drop the program. So we were also told that there was not enough interest, to which we compiled lists of interest of families that are interested. And we also know that ramping up a new program takes time. In fifth grade, before we entered into middle school, we were not given the option to choose Hebrew because it was not listed as an elective. It was not decided until after we turned in our elective forms that this was available. So we didn't have the option to garner more students for this program. Regarding the fact that it is a pilot program, I want to read a letter from Dr. Breggy from May 11th on 2023, when we were dealing with a lot of antisemitism. I'm going to skip through parts of it due to time. He says, "We have taken significant steps over many years to revise our calendar to include Jewish holidays. This year, we implemented kosher food options, and most recently, we officially added Hebrew as a foreign language at Beverly Vista Middle School. These initiatives are a testament to our commitment to fostering a supportive environment for all students." So since we officially brought on the language, I'm asking that the language be restored. If it is too late this year, we're requesting that you respectfully bring it back for the following year, and we're willing to do anything we can to help you find teachers and do anything we can to make it back to the schedule. Thank you.
Nicely timed, thank you. Finally, we have Elizabeth Surudi. Elizabeth Surudi? Ms. Surudi, you have three minutes.
Thank you, good evening, board members. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak at this meeting. I would like to bring two important concerns to your attention. First, I am disappointed to learn that Hebrew is no longer offered as an elective in the middle school. This is my daughter's third year in the Beverly Hills Public School District, having transferred from Sinai Akiba. She enjoyed taking Hebrew last year, and we were looking forward to continuing it with, continuing with it this year. We were surprised to find that it was removed despite significant interest from students. Many parents, including those transitioning from private Jewish day schools, are also hoped their children would continue Hebrew studies to transfer credits to Beverly Hills High School and pursue Hebrew there. Second, I would like to discuss the hot lunch program. While I appreciate the introduction of the kosher hot lunch options, something that has been well-received by students, I have noticed a few issues that need addressing. To improve efficiency during lunch hours, I suggest reinstating the volunteer program that was previously available but has since been discontinued by Heather. Although Heather is doing her best to manage the program, it is clear that additional support is necessary. More stations and volunteers are needed to expedite the program and ensure that all students receive their meals promptly. Additionally, there have been, additionally, there have been frequent complaints by the time some students reach to the front of the line, there is no hot lunch left. Increasing the quality of food available would help alleviate the problem. Thank you for your attention, and to these matters, I look forward to your response, and I'm happy to assist if in any way I can to resolve these issues.
Thank you. We also have Pega Karimi. And you have three minutes.
Good evening, board members, thanks for listening. This is Pega Karimi, I have my PhD in psychology and counseling, and working with kids for a long time. We live in Beverly Hills, have two kids going to school here. I'm franchise owner for the Bricks for Kids in Valley and Sherman Oaks, and now have my franchise in Beverly Hills. We build Lego with instruction. Also, we have Lego motors, which made it more advanced. And in older age, we teach coding in building advanced Legos with motors. As you know, Lego can have lots of positive effect on children, cognitive developments, and problem-solving skills. cognitive developments, and problem-solving skills. I like to have in-school, after-school, and camp here in Beverly Hills schools, enrichment programs, because I live here and want to expand it here, and I know it can be very helpful for Beverly Hills children in school and for their STEM education skills. I'd like you to help me with this issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, and we do have our last speaker, Pamela Kohanchi, that we had asked earlier. She's on Zoom. If we could get Zoom. I know her. That's the other. Okay, we don't quite hear you. Welcome. We need a little louder.
Okay, we don't quite hear you. Welcome. We need a little louder.
Okay, I'm going to get closer to the computer. Is it better now? Okay, I'm going to get closer to the computer. Is it better now?
Can you turn off your what?
Hello?
Okay, just go ahead.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
I can't hear anybody, so I want to make sure you all can hear me. Okay, I'm going to assume you can hear me. Hi, everyone. My name is Pam Goldfinger. I have two boys that attend El Rodeo. I first want to thank the board. I know you guys have a lot of work you do, and you are consistently listening to the parents, the administration, and the faculty. This is my first time making a public comment at your Board of Education meeting, and I want to let you know how important this topic is for me as a parent. My family is Jewish. We keep kosher, and I work a lot. And the kosher program at the Beverly Hills Unified School District has been a godsend in more ways than you can imagine. Not only on a real day-to-day level for me and my family, but also reputationally for our school district. Everyone I talk to is amazed and impressed that we provide kosher meals. My fifth grader couldn't get a kosher meal yesterday because they ran out. Running out of kosher food for a family that actually has that dietary restriction is mind-boggling to me. We live in the Beverly Hills Unified School District. If Heather needs support volunteers from parents, let's do it. If you need additional funding, let's do it. But running out of food does not work, and I really want to be able to support anyone who needs support in that regard. I just don't want to see any more WhatsApps with kids who did not have food at the end of the day because we didn't order it correctly, we couldn't figure out the portions. This is not rocket science. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes public comment. I'd like to make a motion for the consent calendar minus items 8F, H, and O.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that brings us to discussion. 8F.
Thank you. Do I have a microphone? Thank you, Michelle. Thank you so much. I pulled F, the contract with Ms. Montague. I just wanted to get a little bit more information. I recall last year when we approved this contract, and it was just for the TK grade bands. And then in the contract this year, I read that it also is for kindergarten. And I know that there's been a little bit of discussion about, are we offering PE? Are we not offering PE for the kindergarten students? I thought this would be a good idea, a good time to clarify that. I asked, and it was answered, that yes, our kindergarten students are getting one PE session a week with a coach and one alternative PE session with Ms. Montague for Pilates. Is that right? As far as you know, Dr. Breggy?
Yes, as far as I know, that is absolutely correct.
Yeah. So it's just something that-
Because you don't do Pilates.
So it's just something that, I know that this year in particular, we have a lot of new kindergarten students. Usually, we get the little ones in the TK group, and then we get some in kindergarten. This year, last year, in TK, we had three classes, and this year, we have five kinder, and that's just at El Rodeo alone. So I know that there are a lot, and at Horace Mann, there's four, exactly. And so I just want to clarify for the parents that sometimes, you know, we are experimenting with how things are going to work out. But my understanding is that the kindergarten students are getting PE two times a week.
Correct.
Once is with the coach, and the other time is with POGA. And then my question for you is, is that consistent with what the kindergarten students were getting last year at Horace Mann and Hawthorne?
Yes.
Great.
Last year, we provided it two times for-
That's not it? But that's not what they're getting? So that was what I was advised, so maybe it's good that we're having this conversation so we can address whatever the needs might be. And then also, maybe it means that we have to do more by way of the contract with Ms. Montague if we have needs that are not being met. That's why I wanted to-
And we increased services from last year to this year. No, I mean, for, it's increased services. We have nine kinder versus-
Sorry, we were being, the district's been providing POGA, a payment for POGA for TKK and first grade for the last three years. This is year three. So that stayed the same. The increased cost is based on the increased number of sections that we have, right? Are we saying the same thing?
Yes.
Also, with the increased number of sections, we took PE from our PE coaches. We took kindergarten off of their schedules. And so the kindergarten classes only have PE with Ms. Montague and POGA. Kindergarten's non-compulsory, like, education, right? And so those other minutes that are required by the state that require all kids in grades first through fifth to have 200 minutes every 10 days, we can't fit everything into the schedule, and that's where that, those minutes came out. They weren't previously having it 30 minutes a week with the PE coach. Now they'll have the 30 minutes a week with their own teacher.
So then, in terms of-
At your location.
I don't know if it's the same.
No, it's not. And so that's, so if I, yes, love you.
Sorry. Thanks. It's okay, Dr. Seaman. Get it off your chest.
Yes. So at Horace Mann, due to the fact that we do have the four sections, they do see either Coach White or Coach Para for 30 minutes once a week. And that's what was labeled into the board questions. And then with Mary for the four, because we do have the four sections, 30 minutes again. For El Rodeo, we are still in the process of working with Mr. Painter on the scheduling process due to the increase, because we do have the five sections, which was, none of us saw that coming.
Right. It was the last month, kind of a thing.
Correct. So it's a good problem to have, right, is more kids, and so that's what we're working on. What Principal Kaber is stating is that, yes, we are guaranteed the two 30-minute sessions. We're going to make sure that they do have the opportunity to continue with physical education. Even though it is non-compulsory, they will, we will make sure that they wiggle it out, make sure that they're moving, and that we continue, as a former PE teacher myself, that we are still working on utilizing our specialists. The reason we need Mrs. Montague is because we do have two coaches, but we do have a lot of sections in the elementary, and there's just not enough time in the day. So the compulsory physical education needs are grades one through five. So I thank the board and the community for providing us this opportunity to bring in a consultant to provide that for our TK and kinder kids.
Thank you. And then just from my knowledge, so it's not a, if you're five years old, you get this, or if you're six years old, you get that. It's a, if you're in kindergarten, these are the requirements, which are none.
Yes.
And if you're in first grade, that's when the PE requirements start.
Correct. All based on ed code.
Okay, and then, starting soon, if not already, all kindergarten students at Beverly Hills Unified will be getting two 30-minute physical experiences.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'm just going to stay up here. Because I have a few guys.
Should we take a-
Well, I will just foresee that you might then get comments from parents that POGA, you know, not everybody believes in Pilates. I do. That POGA may not be the same thing as going outside and doing basketball. And so I just will submit that to you for your consideration when you're programming.
Totally, and that's exactly what Principal Kaber and I were stating, is that we, due to the increase in that kinder class, we're still working on just wiggling out those minutes.
Thank you.
And that, we'll continue doing so.
Thank you. And I have not met Ms. Montague personally, but I have heard that she's a phenomenon.
Yes.
So thank you to her.
I think before we go on, we should have a motion for the approval of that particular item. I will move for the approval of the 2024-25 professional services agreement, M&amp;M Pilates with Mary Montague.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. That brings us to 8H, Air Tutors LLC Service Agreement.
I will make a motion for the approval of the Air Tutors LLC Services Agreement for 24-25.
Thank you. I pulled this one. I remember when we started this last year, and I just was a little surprised that we were not really offered any update as to how it went. And also by how it went for me as a lawyer, I'm a little bit more evidence-based. So saying like, oh, it went great, or, oh, we had a lot of kids signing up, is a good start. But for me, I would be very interested to know, hey, we had these kids sign up. They were not doing well in these subjects. We tracked these students, and as a result, 90% of them went up by one grade. You know what I mean?
Thousand percent, and so I'm ready to give you that.
Okay.
If that's okay. So ultimately, last year, and you, I hope there is an increased need. We do have more EL students going into the 24-25 school year than we did in the 23-24 school year. So that is the increase of additional costs. For the, people that don't know, Air Tutors is a tutoring company that allows us to find a tutor in their home language. So when we get a newcomer student to the community, say that they only speak Portuguese, we find a tutor in Portuguese that works initially with the parents too, to help them understand the American school system, and it's a kind of a lifeline external for those families when we may not be around to be able to support those kids. So the initial reason we went with Air Tutors is their availability in multiple languages. So last year, in our closure report, they provided tutoring services in Farsi, Russian, Spanish, Hebrew, Mandarin, Cantonese, and Portuguese to our students here. And we had 47 students access the services at BHHS, 61 students-
How many?
Forty-seven students. Again, remember, our primary population is our English learner student. 61 students at Hawthorne, 62 at Beverly Vista, and 25 at Horace Mann. And within that, we typically provide our EL students with about two 45-minute sessions. And again, really, it's helping our families, being able to navigate the American school system while still learning the English language. And so we do see a larger increase in our EL population, especially newcomers, so Level Ones or newcomers to America. And so that's why there's an increase in requests for support this year.
So then, and maybe, thank you.
Yep.
Maybe I misunderstood, but I did not realize that this was focused on our English learners. Because I recall last year and the prior year, we actually also had a robust tutoring program. So this is not that program?
It's, in addition, we also, through our SST program, will identify students that have multiple Ds and Fs that we will utilize Air Tutors as a, almost a tier-two or tier-three, where we're getting to the level of, okay, the student needs more help than what we're able to provide them on campus. But our initial need, and the need that it fulfills, is for our EL students primarily. And of those, so just looking at the California dashboard, of that, all of our students in the EL program do make progress each year. We have very few, we call them LTLs, long-term EL students in the district. Most of our students are able to graduate from our EL program within five years, which is excellent. State code is seven years, and we push for five. And so it's a good data point to have.
Okay, so then, are you going back and surveying the students of, was ex-teacher, for example, effective?
Yes, we are constantly, we're pulling our D and F list with our EL kids. So an example is myself, who directly oversees the EL program. I just met with all the, I look at our principals and the God, I can't, Mr. Cattrall. Our APs, we just met two days ago to review our list of students, looking at their initial ALPAC. They're taking their initial language surveys, their assessments, where they'll be placed, what levels of services they need, what type of air tutors that they would need for additional support. And so we have those meetings frequently to be able to monitor the growth of those kids and make sure that they graduate. If you remember, in the spring, we brought up our EL kids and celebrated them when they graduated from the program. And we'll do the same. We'll keep that going forward.
Thank you.
I'd like to second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. And finally, item 8O.
I will make a motion for the approval of the agreement with LA Kosher Grill for kosher meals.
Okay, discussion?
Thank you. I pulled this contract because when we started the meals last year, I think we did it with the best of intentions for all the reasons that we heard about tonight. And I think that this board is, you know, we're on the same page as our community. This is something great. This is something that's bringing more students to us. It's helping us pull in some of the families from the private schools, and it's something that we want. I did notice this year that we have moved away from the ordering model. As a parent, what I experienced at the beginning is that you were able to order just one week in advance, and it was driving us all nuts. It was really burdensome. And so we piloted that program, and then we went to a month. And then from a month, once we were more consistent, we went through the semester, if I remember correctly, something like that. So that as a mom or dad, you were doing it once, you were printing out your calendar, and you knew what you had signed up for. I was a little surprised this year when there was no sign-up. And I thought, okay, well, maybe that means we've got it in the bag. But on the other hand, the last couple weeks of summer, we got dozens of new kids enrolling, both at El Rodeo and Horace Mann. And so I'm not sure where the disconnect is, but then, as we've heard tonight, there's also been some deficiencies. And so I just want to reconsider our programming. Maybe we want to go back to the ordering model until we're at a homeostasis point, and then go on autopilot? I don't know.
Yes, thank you.
Hi, Rafael.
Hi, how are you?
How are you?
Good, good. Yes, so what happened was that during the summer, there was some surveying regarding the ordering system that we had in place for last year. I guess that the response that the district received from participants in the kosher program last year was that they would prefer for there not to be an ordering system. This is what we received mostly. And so I think that, to your point, what's happened is it's very difficult to guess how many students will choose it on that day. And what we've seen, we've seen two things. One of them is we've seen an increase in the amount of students that are requesting kosher meals, which is great. You know, we'd love to fill that. But I think that the other thing that happened was that we are not seeing consistency every day. And so I think that, to your point, if, it may seem like we need to go back towards implementing the ordering system to make sure that we have enough meals. And what we were doing last year too, at towards the end, there is ordering a little more so that in case, the last thing we want is a student not getting a meal.
Of course.
That's unacceptable, and we will do everything in our possibility and our power to not have that happen. But I think that it necessitates the ordering.
Yeah.
So we did actually do a lot of work with the kosher in the sense of also like putting out an RFP to see if we could get a bigger scope of vendors that could provide different types of meals, but really, the only, and we put it in several papers and everything, but the vendor that we got was LA Kosher Grill, who gave us a pretty competitive rate as well. So we're going to work with them as best as we can to address some of these concerns that were brought up today, and some of that could be done through the Wellness Committee as well. So we'll look at that. But to your point, I do think that we will look at re-establishing the ordering system.
Yeah, or you could just over-order and then reduce by 5%, you know what I mean, until you get there. I leave that up to you. That's another option.
Yeah, we're looking at all those-
I'll let you figure that out.
There've been several days too where it's, there's been a lot that's been left over too.
I'm sure there is.
We just need to figure that out. We just need to figure that out.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted our community to know, we're doing this because we wanna do it, and we're happy to do it. This food is available to everybody, regardless of your religion or your background. So it actually brings a little bit of diversity in the move, in the menu. You know, it's not just burgers and pizza every day. So I think it's exciting for the kids to be able to try different things, and thank you for fine tuning it.
We have a lot of kids that love it. Like, for instance, today, we started about two-hundred-and-sixty meals, which is up from last year.
Last year was two-thirty.
Yeah, so we have more, more, more and more kids.
Yeah.
And it's tasty, like I've tried it.
I know, I heard Dr. Reggie loves the hormisabzi.
It's so good.
It is, it's very good.
The hormisabzi.
But thank you for that concern, for bringing that to our attention, and to the people that have, have sent us emails and spoken as well. We will do everything we can to address these concerns immediately.
Thank you.
All right, very good. So I'll second the approval of agreement with LA Kosher Grill Inc. for kosher meals. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, so now we have Student Board Member Report. With Remy.
So. Okay, so the Student Board Report. First, over. Yeah, let me just. Okay, so first, we, over the summer, there is CADA Camp for ASB Leadership. And students from the ASB Executive Cabinet, Senior Cabinet, and Junior Cabinet attended a four-day, three-night trip to CADA, a summer leading camp, leadership camp that is designated, or designed for students to, in grade seven to twelve. The camp focuses on building leadership, communication, and problem-solving skills, while also helping students prepare for college and careers. During the camp, we exchanged ideas with other schools, learning about their events, promotional strategies, and new pep rally games. Each evening, influential speakers shared valuable life lessons that left a lasting impact on all of us. So overall, I was, I attended the CADA camp as well, and overall, it was a great experience for me. Many different schools all across California came there, and even some not in California, there was like an age group that, across the country, flew in. And it was really great to see all different students who are your age, part of ASB, the same program, and all have similar issues, different issues, and you can all collaborate with each other and see how to manage these issues at your school. And also, a lot of us still have contact with those people, because we made friends. And anytime we have a problem, we can just like text them, and say like, what, what do you think about this idea? What, like, how, have you ever done this? Did it work at your school? Should I do it at mine? So overall, I feel like it was a great success for the ASB program. And here are some more pictures. This is my, my council on the top left. It either separated into each, each person was separated into different councils, and no one from your school is in the same council, unless it's like a large group. Like Fresno had three school buses come, filled with students who are in ASB, and, and other leadership activities. But, yeah, overall, it's a great success. Next, this past week was Wow Week, where, which is the week of welcome, and ASB welcomed back both former and new students with exciting themed days. Monday started us off with Brat Day, which is inspired by a trending artist's green-themed apple, or green-themed album, with everyone dressed in green and receiving a caramel apple lollipops. Other days include Sunglasses Day and Minion Day, where students wore yellow and blue and enjoyed free bananas. In addition, on Thursday, it was Ice Cream Sandwich Day, so free ice cream was served to students who brought their own two cookies. And finally, the week wrapped up with a cozy Pyjama Day, creating a great start to the school year. And here are some more images of people participating in the week of welcome, Spirit Week. For Beverly Vista Middle School, we have them learning about the BVMS core values currently, with everyone just easing into the school right now, current, right now, yeah. And ASB is promoting their Spirit Week. They still are getting that all together. I wasn't able to get any pictures of people for their Spirit Week, but this is just a sneak peek to it. And they're also getting ready for the opening of their Four Core Student Store, which I thought was really amazing, that they're opening something like that, because at BHA, Beverly, they have the Student Store, but now at BVMS, they'll have their own Four Core Student Store, and I like the name that they added to that, so, yeah. And at El Rodeo Elementary, here's some students at their science class, people loving the new school, and they're also helping, they're implementing the transition from Hawthorne Heroes to the El Rodeo Eagles. Everything, yeah, the El Rodeo Eagles, and I feel like the transition to the new elementary school has been a great trend, has been great. And all the students, I've only been hearing positive reviews, loving the school, loving the new playgrounds especially. And I feel like it's, we've reached a great success with this transition. Here's just some more images, as you can see the orientations for both parents and the students. And on August twenty-third, which was last Friday, ASB hosted the Club Summit for all new and returning clubs for the school year, which a hundred thirty students were in attendance. This event marked the beginning of the approval process for clubs to be efficiently recognized at the high school. And Ms. Decatur and I are also how, working on certain club bulletin boards around our school that clubs can decorate a certain way, and it's just for them to decorate everything about their club, provide information about their club, and just make that bulletin board theirs, and they can decorate as much as they want, with approval of, like, in the guidelines and everything. Also, the theater team has announced their new play, The Diary of Anne Frank, and our auditions are now open for students interested in trying out for a spot in the cast. Beverly Hills Reads is also inviting all staff and students to a discussion with Georgia Hunter, author of We Were the Lucky Ones, on Sunday, September fifteenth, at El Rodeo Elementary. This book, which was the summer reading for all grade levels, tells the story of a Jewish family determined to survive and reunite during World War II. And a new Hulu series inspired by the book features our very own Beverly High alumnus, Logan Lerman, which was a pretty interesting fact that he attended Beverly, and now he's in the Hulu series. And it's our reading book. We also have some new counseling interns, and Career Academy has had their second meeting last week. And it's just introducing all the students, previous students from last year, and this is the second year that Career Academy is being held. And so the new students are learning about it. The leaders from last year are in, we're welcoming the new students and making them feel comfortable. And basically, if you don't know about what Career Academy is, it's a program that students are, every Wednesday morning before school, will go to a different hotel in the Beverly, Beverly Hills community, and they will learn the different aspects of hospitality, like the culinary program, like the medicine program with nurses at the hotel. And it's a really great experience for all the students at Beverly, and anyone's welcome to apply. But I believe the set, the, to apply is now closed, but hopefully for next year, more students will join. And finally, just some ASB questions and concerns. I heard that lunch tables on the third-floor patio have been removed, and this created problems for students who used to eat lunch at those tables. Which, they just wanted to know, are there any new tables being ordered? If so, what is the ETA? Here's a picture of, there used to be tables right over here, and at each one of those, but no one's sure what happened to them. They just wanted me to bring it up at the board meeting. And. A suggested idea for CAPS, CAPS scores would be an incentive for students, because I know that some parents or some of the faculty are concerned about the scores we are receiving. So we thought that maybe we, in order to bring their score up, there'll be a, there'll be a word, the privilege to leave lunch during their senior year.
Genius.
So, especially for like, this won't work for current seniors, but current juniors, if they bring their score up like one level higher, then they'll be allowed to leave school for, yeah, like Fridays, any other day, like, obviously, we'll talk about it, plan it, but, yeah. It'd be a great incentive, I think, for people to want to get their score higher.
Love having you here.
I know, great.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Go around, comments? Thank you, Remy.
Just thank you so much. It's really such a pleasure to have you here. And I also was in ASB in my year. We went to Stanford, and it changed me. It was an amazing experience. I'm glad that you and your friends had that. And I do wanna thank you for your question, and for your idea, and I really welcome you being your school representative. So you're off to a great start. Thanks.
Thank you.
Wow, that was fantastic. You stepped right into that seat, and you really pitched in a great synopsis of what went on during the past week. Great job. One thing you did forget, I don't wanna, you had the carnival at Beverly Vista for the kids.
Oh, wow. Yeah, I didn't hear about that, but.
The only reason I can, I was there, but it was a great, great report, and I looked forward to many, many more.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Where was, where was it held? Did you say where CADA was held?
Oh, it was, no, it was held at UCSV.
Oh, nice.
And we actually stayed on their campus, in their dorms.
Great.
It was like, also just an experience for us to, mostly the seniors were there, and we got to experience like how it is living away and in a dorm. So it's a great experience.
Okay, great, thank you. Wonderful report.
Thank you.
That brings us to our Superintendent Report.
Yes, and it's gonna tie into a lot of what you were just talking about, Remy. And I love the idea about incentives, so that will really fit into our conversation as we begin to unfold our strategic plan. And this will transition over here in just a second. As that's happening, we've just completed our tenth day of school. And so it seems very appropriate at this time that we start to talk about our draft strategic plan for the next year, which gets tighter and tighter, and begins to drill down to the most important part of why we're here, which is student achievement. We typically have done this in the past, where we've had a study session for our strategic plan. And, you know, we want to be able to have some, some prime time, so to speak, about this plan. There's a lot of work that is put together. When we look at this plan, there's a lot of accountability. And so by moving this topic up into a board meeting, we wanna be really transparent. It is a three-sixty involvement between staff and administration, our board, and our community. And the visibility and transparency around this presentation is just really important. People should be able to know our goals. It, it doesn't matter where you are in the community. You should have awareness of the goals that we have as a school district. We're proud of the work that we're doing. It's tough work. It's necessary work. And as we begin to move into this cycle, we're going to share with you this timeline. This timeline, it's crucial just to note that we are in the beginning of this cycle again. As we begin to look at the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year, the information that is coming today is based on last year's assessments. And so if you can see on this timeline, you know, we will have that information for you today. We'll be sharing that with you. But as far as the new data coming from, with, working with teacher valuations, and our attendance data, discipline data, all of that will be generated this school year, and we'll have some results for you after our first quarter, which will happen in November. So you can kind of see, here's the, the cycle that we have. We'll be coming back again. After the presentation this evening, we have an opportunity to meet with our board and get some board feedback about the presentation. And then we have extended an offer to meet with our board as well, just so that it may not be tonight. It's a pretty lengthy presentation, that after you have some time to think about what's being shared, that you come back and, and we can meet for an additional time before we do the final approving of the strategic plan, which will happen sometime in September, if not the first meeting, perhaps the second. So our focus, as you know, has been on educational excellence. This is, we're all supporting three different goals. When we look at our work, it's falling into three different goal areas. Supporting positive student behavior, engaging students in learning, and also growing and developing professionally. When we had our opening day, I talked about really honing in on the things that we have, the resources that we have, and really focusing on not only what we have, but making sure we know how to use everything that we have. We've made a lot of changes recently about the way that we are assessing student learning, and we wanna make sure that we are consistent, and that we are fully utilizing those assessment procedures, the policies that we have, the observations that we have, and most importantly, the feedback that we have with one another. Everything that we do throughout the school year, anything that's coming to our Board of Education for approval, should fit into these areas. Supporting positive student behavior, engaging students in learning, and also growing, developing professionally. So we, we have been evaluated in many ways. And so we had a study session at the end of the school year last year about the US News and World Report, and the rankings, and how that works. And we've really been studying those factors to see, and make sure that we're informed about how we're being ranked. But even more importantly than, how can we take that information and make sure that our educators know, and our community understands how that works as well? This is a top-niche, top-thirty survey, that it's done locally. It's done through the, the state of California and also nationally. It is niche. It looks like it's niche, and people will say niche, but it's actually niche. And this ranking looks at school districts as a whole. So while US News and World Report is important, and we are really studying the factors that go into that ranking, there's also niche that looks at school districts as a whole. And you can see that we rank very high within our national, and our local, and within our community, and also within Laco. You can see up here that we have, our, our rankings as a school district is number twenty of six-hundred-and-eighty in this category of districts with the best teachers. Number thirty in, out of five-hundred-and-four best school districts in the state, and number nine of fifty-nine best school districts in LA County. And nationally, a hundred and ninety-three of ten-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty-two best school districts in America. Just another factor that we're looking at, and what's unique again, is that it looks at the entire school district. So tonight, we're going to go over some, some student achievement, some growth areas. I'm going to just kick off with a couple of slides in the beginning, and if you look at this slide, this is elementary. And sorry if my picture's in the way of, of that graph for you at home. If you look at the left-hand side of this graph, you're going to see that there is elementary, and it's, it's for two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-four. So the grayer area is your two thousand twenty-three, and then the white bar underneath that is going to be for two thousand twenty-four. And what's different about this than what we've shown before is, we're really comparing here the actual student achievement, the growth, in the same grade level. So you're gonna hear a lot about cohort data, and about following students as they grow, as they go into different grade levels. This is just a quick snapshot to see that this is current third grade, and then also third grade again. So you can see that there is slight improvement. This is some growth that's happening in our district that we wanna share with you as, as our cohorts do get older, and a new group of kids come in, into a third grade, into a fourth grade, into a fifth grade. That left-hand side is in English Language Arts, and on the right-hand side is mathematics. For our secondary schools, so our sixth, seventh, our eighth, and also our ninth and our eleventh, you can see the same thing. So the gray bar on the left-hand side is English Language Arts. And the, if you are looking at that data, the, the next group of students that come in, into that same grade level, is in the white band. That you can see that in most areas, that there is some improvement in this area as well. We're gonna look at the data in different ways, the cohort data, following as students get older and matriculate through the grades. The cohort data, following as students get older and matriculate through the grades. But also we, we're going to stay, take a snapshot of where we are with our current grade levels as well. And what's really important for us is to see why that growth has occurred. It's, it's greater in some grade bands than others. But it's also important to see why there's been a slower growth in a certain grade level. And it's, it's our job then to go back and start looking at the, the curriculum and the, the assessments that are being used and which teachers were in different grade levels and what's consistent, what's working and what's not working. And so that's important for us to be able to look at that growth as well so that we can reflect on our own practice as well with each grade level. So as we move forward through the presentation, if you could please, if you have any questions, just to, to write them down, you'll have some opportunity at the end. It'll be a smoother presentation for us if we can go through and share our information with you. What you're going to see moving forward, our school principals will be up here and sharing some information with you. They're gonna dive into more of the specifics of their goal areas, their assessment data, also their action plans. This is kind of where the rubber meets the road when it comes to sharing this information. We're in a vulnerable state, we're sharing this information and want to be transparent with you that, you know, we've got a lot of work to do in front of us. I do believe we have the right people in the right places to make this happen. It's a big ship to turn around. And I believe that we have the right team, the right transparency and the right type of reporting to our board and to our community moving forward to show this growth in areas where we need to improve. So we'll start this evening for the specific data with Principal Sarah Kaber at Elrodeo.
There's nothing else on there. I think this is it. It's just me. It's just me. Hi, Board of Education. Dr. Bregy, thank you so much for having me. I am so excited to stand up here and present Elrodeo Elementary School's Goals of Excellence. I don't think that that's gonna get old anytime soon. So forgive me if I slip back to anything that says Hawthorne, but I'm very excited to share about Elrodeo. So as Dr. Bregy talked about, there's three different areas that we like decided to put in all of our goals. All of them match with Danielson. We decided that if we're asking our teachers to use Danielson as their framework for educational excellence, we should also make our goals meet in Danielson. So those three pieces are, bless you, are supporting positive student behavior, engaging students in learning and growing and developing professionally. And because we like to talk about test scores, I'm gonna just start with number three also, which is the middle one. That's 3C, engaging students in learning. And I'm just gonna talk a little bit about our, our goals, which are that by 2025, students will increase their proficiency in English Language Arts, Mathematics and Science by 3%. We wanna say that, Dr. Bregy presented all of the overall data and you can see that in like the 14 different bands that we grew in 10 of them. And in elementary, we grew in every single grade level in Language Arts and in Math from last year. So we're very proud across both schools.
Can I interrupt you real quick? I want to tell you, I'm really pleased. I did look at the Elrodeo data in terms of percentage of those who met and or exceeded. And I saw that there were a few percentage points that went up on both English Language Arts and Math. It wasn't a drastic increase, but it was an increase and I just was pleased, so.
Thank you. I'm very, very excited about it. I also want to talk about.
Excuse me, Sarah.
Yes.
Mrs. Kaber, I just want to clarify one thing for everybody if they can see this, that you're looking at 2021-22, a 69% score in math. Is that correct?
That's not the score, it's the percent that met or exceeded. These are not scores.
No, I meant the percent.
It's the percent of students who met or exceeded their state standards.
Okay. And then that went up in, now is that the same group that is in 22 or 23? Or is that the, the, I want to clarify, what group is that when you're talking about cohorts?
This is in cohort, this is the group of students that were at Hawthorne in those years. So the students that took the test, everyone who took the test, third, fourth and fifth graders who took the test in 2021-22, of those, 80% met proficiency or exceeded proficiency in ELA and 69% met or exceeded proficiency in math.
But is that the same group of kids across, in other words, three years ago? Or is that then two years ago and then last, this year?
This is school-wide data, so it's everybody. So all the third, fourth and fifth graders, so those third graders are counted in the 2021-22 data. Then they become fourth graders counted in the 22-23 data. Then they become fifth graders counted in the 23-24 data.
So they're all within the same group?
Sort of, like we lose some, yeah. And then, so it's everybody who's there, sorry. And then if you look down at the bottom where it says ELA and then grade band, sorry, ELA and grade band, that's like the beginning, sorry, it went to two pages, and math, that's where you can see some cohort data.
Can I also?
Sorry.
Can I also just say, cause I, I did neglect to say that when I was talking about the transparency, this is all online, so if you look on our website, this is all there. So if you, even on your phones, if you want to just go to our website under Explore BHUSD, you will see the draft strategic plan there so that you can see the backup information.
And I apologize, I wasn't gonna jump up here, but you, you did it, you did it to me earlier. I just, so, so out of, again, what Dr. Bregy had mentioned earlier about just full transparency, what we want to draw the community's attention to is this is what the data is that we are compared to when we are judged at the state or national level. Again, going back to our last year's third grade versus this year's third grade, or last year's fourth grade versus this year's fourth grade. And you'll see in areas such as like fourth grade math, where in the district, we had over a four or five point growth from last year's fourth graders performing to this year's fourth graders. And so that's the piece that you want to see. But where, where Dr. Bregy was stating is we, through our assessment programs, through IREDDI and WEA, our DNFs, we are going further than that point because we really want to unpack and understand where the true issues lie. And that's where I appreciate the principals for being very honest and vulnerable. Where on their plans that you will see each individual plan, we're also tracking the data in two other ways. It's not just about saying, here's what the district did and we are a great district. It is what is happening with each of these grade bands? And then in addition, what Mrs. Marcus is asking, we're now asking, as these kids are progressing, what is happening between each grades as they're moving upwards? So there's almost three sets of data here versus, if you remember, I used to come up here and do a presentation around every September and it would be this data right here. You would see these bar graphs and then that would be it and we would go home. Now we're unpacking it even further, we're pulling the onion back, trying to get to each individual student this way. So I, sorry, and that's what Mrs. Principal Kaber was just explaining.
That's okay. I also want to talk a little bit about the level of fifth grade math, because I know that's been our conversation a lot. This year, we hit, just in fifth grade math, 69% met or exceeded their, their standards. While that's still a place that we're working on, it's still always a focus level. But I just wanted to point out that last year, we were at 61% of those students and the pre, the year before that, we were at 50% of our students. And so we've really made a lot of progress and that's about like educational strategies being aligned to student results.
That doesn't show that on here, that, 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 that happened though, because it's not on this chart.
It's not. I can show it to you, but it's not exactly on that chart, so.
So then in other words, in reading these things, although these, as you look across, you see you started at 72 and then 87 and then 69.
Yes, so it's, it's that chart there at the bottom of fifth grade where you're seeing that we're actually continuing to improve. That's up right now. And that is the gap between, we, we know that there's a decline, there's a decline nationally between fourth grade scores and fifth grade scores. But we're closing that gap every time and we've really worked the last three years to close that gap between where they are. That cohort drops off. We want that drop off to be zero, we want it to like continue to get higher. And what we're showing before, we can show that in terms of cohort data, is that the places where we've dropped off have been significant. And a huge shout out to like my fifth grade team who's worked so hard to move the, those scores around proficiency up. So I just wanted to talk a little bit about CGI math and the work that we've done with partners in practice and how that's really getting our students and our teachers to talk about math in a way that's experiencing math, having them come up with their own understanding. And it makes their entire classroom really work in the way that the testing is working so that they're not necessarily prepping for the test and doing everything that's working toward their CASP test. But they've really taken the way that questions are formulated for the CASP test and made that into CGI math. Can the kids, can the students really explain their thinking and understand the sense around their numbers? And we're seeing that in evidence that are in their math scores. So we've continued to put that in, in our plan over and over again. And then the other piece in this bucket is talking about student interactions, student-to-student interactions and we want them to be structured. So when you walk into a classroom, you want to know that students are talking to each other in a way that's, the teacher is paying attention to what the student knows. Because the person who's doing the talking clearly is doing the learning and the teacher has to make some decisions about what the students are knowing at that time and knows when and where to ask the next question, to formulate the next step and to know which kids are being pulled to get it again and which kids are being pulled to get pushed forward. That sort of takes us to number four, if I can sort of go out of order, which is growing and developing professionally as, so it's 4E, which is what our goal was. It's the last one. I know I'm going totally out of order, but follow me for a second.
Which page is this?
It's on page five of mine. So growing and developing professionally, our goal is to work in collaborative teams and define, redefining and implementing professional learning communities so that our staff themselves can score themselves as proficient on the Danielson. So we've put Danielson right into our goals and I know what they're looking for in terms of that rubric. A professional learning community is an ongoing conversation about how to meet students' needs. It's not a meeting, it's not a time of day, it's not a book group. It's an ongoing conversation about how do we meet the needs? And it really focuses on four questions, which are, what do we want students to know? Those are the part of our standards and how do we break down those standards? And how do students know, thank you, know our, know which standards that they need to know and what part of those learning targets that they need to know? How will we as teachers know that they know it? What's our evidence there? And then the two groups that I just talked about is what are we gonna do when they know it and what are we gonna do when they don't? So it's like an ever-going choose-your-own-adventure, right, book? So you're constantly in cycles of that sort of learning and, and lesson plan cycles. And that we want all of our staff to be participating in that. And our action steps really talk about what that will look like on campus as we roll this out and get it started. And our final piece, which is about positive student behavior, is, has a goal around attendance. We were so close to meeting our 95% attendance score. We are keeping it at 95% until we can clearly meet it over time. And we know that the things that we implemented last year will be continued. Short-term independent study, real clear tracking around when kids are absent. And then the second part of that is a goal around being able to identify school behaviors and demonstrate skills on campus and in the community. And then decreasing office discipline referrals and things that are managed by administration by 10%. One of the things that we're implementing this year is SWISS, which is School-Wide Intervention System. Thank you to Student Services who's making sure that that's happening. It's a really clear system around what causes a discipline, either a low level or an office discipline referral. What's happening between two students, where is it happening? What's the, what's the antecedent of that behavior? And it's allowing us to track not only what's happening, but then to track who's addressing it, how's it being addressed? And when are there patterns that are coming up? Like are our second graders having an issue on the soccer field? Or are the first graders having an issue in the bathroom? And that sort of school-wide data will help us to really monitor that. And then another piece of this long list of things that we're doing is getting our students to transfer their knowledge around Hebrew, oh, sorry. My apologies, around hero to, sorry about that. To, of hero into Eagle goals. And they're having a pretty good time around that. They're able to transfer all of that knowledge. And really, we feel like we have one really strong, like try to push forward all of those behavior expectations. We're taking a, a page out of the middle school book where we're gonna, we have some planned assemblies for each grade level on a really regular basis, where we're gonna talk, now that we have an auditorium, we're gonna talk to whole grade levels at a time about some expectations and what they need specifically. We've already done that once, we taught them how to be in an auditorium, that was awesome. And about like some basic rules around campus and we have all of them sort of planned out for the year. So we're excited about that. That is all of mine. Do you have any questions? Are we waiting for questions at the end? Just kidding. I want to invite up Ms. Ellerby.
Did I? I had one Elrodeo specific question.
Well, I would do.
You go ahead.
I, I just would like to, and I know that this will come up with all of the grade levels and I know that there's, what you say is you would like to increase to by 3% the scores. And I, with the, I, I, and you total up the number of students that are nearly met or not met in math, it comes up to 36%. And I would hope that the goal there is to reduce that number, not to. That's what I see as a goal, more than the 3% of the other. I would love to see that number way down to 10 and 5 or whatever. I would just love to see more of our students.
Less of the not met.
Yeah, less, that's what I'm saying. That now are in the met and exceeded category. And that to me is a goal.
Right, moving those kids in their cohorts.
Moving those kids over and that is my biggest concern. And one other thing, and I've been saying this for, for a long time, I want to get the kids off of in sixth and fifth grade, counting on their fingers. I don't know how you can do that, but I am, and not knowing their math facts, I can tell you, I hear parents complain that our children count on their fingers. And I, I know and I learned way back when. You know, there's nothing wrong with learning those facts and having them up here.
So one of the things in our plan is about FactWise, which is a real structured way of learning those facts and understanding how to break the numbers apart. So there, there is a time when we want them to use their fingers, right, there is that time. Then we want them to transition to understanding how numbers get broken apart. And so there's different levels around FactWise, around teaching them so that they know how to break up seven and five to make 12. And they have that in their, their brain so well so that when it becomes 77 and 25, that they can also make those together. And that when it becomes a four and five-digit numbers, they see the patterns that we do. None of us are lining up numbers and borrowing and carrying like we learned on paper. We're really moving numbers in our brains and so we're teaching kids from a very young age. So you'll see that that's part of it, is that, that understanding of math and that's part of CGI work.
Well, I'll go back to the old way. I, I know you're, what you're saying, but seven and five is 12 and I didn't have to count on my fingers.
Right, that's, I'm agreeing with you.
Memorization. I wanted to commend you on your numbers. Thank you very much and your teams.
Thank you.
I think it's a big deal that you went from 75% ELA proficient to 79 and 74% math proficient to 78. And I'm sure you can do, you know, where you're trying to go next year with the three plus. My question to you is, when we first started this together a couple of years ago, you actually were the first principal that was meeting with your teachers on a monthly basis with your grade bands. And I remember that. And from there, you moved to three times a year. And so is my understanding, right? Now it's three times a year?
It's a little bit different. So there's two different things that we do. One is a weekly meeting, we meet every single week and we did last year and the last few years to talk about students, where they are, what's happening, so that I sort of have a sense and they have a sense of like, where are we going and we're checking in, right? So if I'm not there, it's one of the other administrators. And we are talking about where kids are, what, what are we learning, what are we studying? Where are we, are we on the same page, a touchstone around where are we going? That is different than the three times a year data chats where we take some time out of our day and we get everyone in the room to really look at all of our scores. So this first few weeks of school, we're still assessing. We gave our teachers a little bit longer because of the move and like, we asked them to spend more time with like procedures, academic procedures and behavioral procedures before they got our assessments done. And our data chats will be on the 9th. So each teacher will be out of class for two hours and we'll be talking about all of the scores that they have, all the IREDDI scores, all the DRA scores, the Developmental Reading Assessment, those FactWise scores, where are they in math? I'm gonna know which of those fifth graders are still counting on their fingers. And we're gonna talk about what are we doing to assess this. So that really happens in a big sort of way for data chats. In September, in January and again in, in the spring. And then in a smaller way, it's moving from this weekly meeting to professional learning communities where they're gonna talk about each of that, each of that work all of the time to talk about where are we? What are we doing for the kids that are not meeting a specific standard and what's our plan? And what are we doing for the kids that already know it? And talking a little bit about that.
So then, is it your opinion that the September 9th, January and then May, is that enough? Or looking back, do you feel like, oh wow, I really got a head start on this when I was meeting more consistently? I'm just trying to figure out what you would consider to be the best practices now, having done it both ways.
I think how we're doing it is, is good. I think how we're doing it is, is good. I think that we have, um, a tighter protocol for what those weekly meetings are gonna look like. And it also gives us an opportunity as opposed to saying like, we're gonna stop in place at a 10-week and make a decision about things, that we are making a decision about what does a lesson cycle look like? If we need to stop and talk in first grade at week six because we know what's happening and in another grade level not until week 12, we sort of have that ability to do it as opposed to a set time of year. Um, that set time of year, beginning of the year, middle of the year, end of year is for everything, for whole school, school-wide data, all of us looking at it and comparing across grade bands.
Okay, so then that means that on a weekly basis, you are meeting with
Every grade level's meeting.
Every grade level.
Yeah, and then everyone who doesn't teach a specific grade level is meeting in a grade level group. We're calling them collaborative, um, teams as part of, as we move more toward the PLC process.
The specialists are coming on board.
Yeah, some of the specialists are meeting with their co- cohorts. Like the music and music are meeting together, art and art are meeting together, PE is meeting together across the two schools. But for us, what I mean, um, like a learning lab teacher is coming into a grade level meeting so that they can have a touch point. Our special education teachers each have a grade level that they work with most of all and they're meeting with those t- teams.
Thank you.
No problem.
One more question if I can, Mrs. Kabor. Um, the use of the, uh, I-ready and the correlation between the improvement and the testing and so on. How do you feel that in terms of helping, uh, assess and getting so that, you know, we, let's face it, what, what are our big, we're based on the grade, the scores that our kids get on CASP. How are you correlating and using them so that you feel that they re- we gave these to you when we started a year ago or two years ago. Give us some feedback on that. I would like some of that.
I think that the I-ready scores predicted how students would do on the CASP. And we saw some real growth around student work. Um, from the beginning of the year to the, to middle of the year to end of the year. We also have some goals that it's written more deeply. I didn't go into it today. But about, um, making our students aware of what their personal goal is in terms of I-ready. I-ready sets a goal for all of the students and says, this is your annual growth goal. And then sets a stretch goal for them and says like, if you're really trying, you can go to this higher place. And so we did some of that work with a few pockets of students. But one of our goals this year is to make sure that all of our students know, this is where you are to start, this is what your annual growth is, this is what you're, you know, hope for, this is what your stretch growth looks like. And then have that conversation with parents. Because we were able to have some of that conversation around, there's no growth here. Hey, we're looking at December and there's no growth. Or the opposite, which is like, hey, your student has already met their annual growth goal by December. So we're looking for how we can support that student. It also gives us information around students who were below grade level that had, um, a stretch goal. And what it tells us is that we can't, for students who are below grade level, we can't keep them at one year's growth in one year's time. They'll never catch up. So I-ready helps us to support, what does a stretch goal look like? Meaning if you can meet your stretch goal after two years, you should be much closer to grade level, if not on grade level. Do you want to jump in? I can see it.
And then I also want to mention-
I mean, if you want to talk about I-ready right now, I have a lot of questions about that.
Well, I just want to, I just want to say, we do have three other schools, okay? So I want to-
I'll get out of here. Why, Principal Kabor, um, um, and I choose for, um, not able yesterday, Dr. Sherman, or no, yesterday, Thursday, Dr. Sherman, myself and to the assistant principals that oversee the I-ready program at the elementary schools, were able to obtain our closure data. And so one of the best parts is how scary it is aligned with our CASP data. So at the end, again, as an example, the fourth grade that Dr. Bargui and both, uh, Principal Kabor had highlighted, it had stated close to 80, 80% of the students would meet or exceed state standards and 79% met or exceeded state standards for the district. And so that's how close it is. And then it gives us within the chart, it identifies students within, like Principal Kabor had said, your stretch goal, those kids that we need to just, a little bit of a push to get them up over to the meet or exceeds. And so both NWEA and I-ready, we do have that data that, I don't know why I'm showing it to the, you can see it at home? But it does provide us with, as, as, uh, that data that we did not have in previous that other school districts were utilizing, such as Palo Alto and Palace Verdi's, those that we are competing with. Um, and, and now we have that data. And so it's a really good resource for us.
But Dr. Seaman, do you find that the teachers, at the end of the day, you and I can look at all the charts.
Yeah.
But are the teachers welcoming the data from the I-ready so that they are able to recalibrate quickly?
Yes. I, I believe that both at the elementary level and even at the secondary level too, because we also are discussing NWEA, is that those data chats, like you stated, are becoming more normalized, let's use that term. Where expectations are, we're coming in. So an example, you know, uh, Drew and Rich will come up. We've already have their dates set for NWEA, you know? We'll spend two hours with math, two hours with English, two hours with science. Same thing with the elementaries. So those dates are already set on our master calendar. The teachers know the diagnostic will be done. We'll have the conversations around the data. And then exactly that is they're then charged with going back to the site levels. And then what do we need to change today? Instructionally to ensure we are getting those kids by the end of the school year.
And then for the middle school and high school, do you think it would be a good idea to subdivide? So it's not two hours, for example, with math across the entire high school, but it's two hours math algebra, two hours math geometry, two hours math trig and so on? So that really you're able to hone in with those subgroups?
No, it's great feedback. I think that's something that we can definitely bring back to us.
Two hours math, algebra, geometry, trig, statistics, algebra, that's a lot to cover in two hours.
Yeah.
If you're only doing it three times a year. I mean, I know for you, it, it, it's, it's a heavy lift, but I think
It's worth it.
Based on what I've seen, we need to go deeper. Please. Thank you.
All right, our next guest. Hello, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Bargui. Good evening, board members. I'm very excited to present the strategic plan for Horace Mann for the 2024-25 school year. So I will start with, um, Horace Mann's end-of-year assessment data. Um, you have in front of you our school-wide results for CASP. And you can see that over the three-year period in 2022 in language arts, 74% of the students met or exceeded standards. In 2023, 72% of the students met or exceeded standards. And in 2024, 71% of the students met or exceeded standards in language arts. In math, in 2022, 65% of the students met or exceeded standards. In 2023, 64% met or exceeded. And in 2024, 64% met or exceeded. So you can see from this three-year growth pattern that while there are obviously excellent instructional programs at Horace Mann, because these results are good, especially in comparison to other schools, you know, around the state, it does show that we're kind of holding steady. And that it's, it might be necessary for us to bring in one or two more elements to our instructional delivery so that we can start showing a growth pattern. Our goal for 2025 is to grow by 5%. It's a little bit more ambitious than, um, our partner school, but we've got a little bit more catching up to do. And we've been talking as a team. We really feel like we can make it happen this year. If you look at our band growth, well, our band, um, results for 2024, it was 45% exceeded standards, 27% met standards, 12% nearly met, and 16% not met. When we looked at our three-year growth pattern for band movement, what we saw from math and language arts was that those numbers didn't change. So not only are we holding steady with our overall met and exceeded, we're also staying the same in our band movement. So these are areas that we really want to target this year. When we started with our opening staff development, our teachers looked at this data, but they also looked at their grade level, um, growth patterns. And they looked at their grade level band movement patterns. And so they, um, talked about what was working and what's not working, areas where the students are doing well and areas where we could see more growth. And they came up with their own goals for where they wanted to see growth at each grade level. And then they talked about, well, if, let's say for example, fourth grade wants to go from 65% in math to 70% in math this school year, what are the four or five strategies or practices that have to happen in every single classroom in order for that goal to be met? And they listed those actions and we shared out and we had discussions. And there were some commonalities, um, among the grade levels about things that we would all need to be doing so that we can grow as a school. And you'll see some of that in our strategic plan. There's going to be a little bit of consistency because Ms. Kabor and I did a plan together over the summer. So there's a lot of consistency in our strategic plan and some of it might be a little bit repetitive, but I'm gonna talk about what we're doing. We are going to be meeting in PLCs, uh, once a week. That hasn't been a consistent practice at Horace Mann, but this year the teachers are really committed to having those weekly meetings where they talk about common teaching, what standards are we all going to teach? At the same time, what common assessments can we give to ensure that our students are growing? What are we gonna do for students who are meeting the standards? And what are we gonna do for the students who are not meeting the standards? We are also having data chats three times a year. Data teams are made up of classroom teachers, administrators, uh, intervention teachers, the EL specialist, um, the counselor, and instructional aides. We will be meeting in September after we get the results of our I-ready, those first results. And just like at Elrodale, our teachers will get half the day. They'll get subs and they'll get to go through that data to determine where their students are at. And there was a question that was asked about how useful do teachers find those I-ready results? They find them extremely useful. We had our ILT meeting yesterday and teachers were asking, when are we doing data chats? Because it's a week later than it has been in the past because we started assessing a week later. Because that information gives them that vital, um, data about where each student is. Because we're really committed to meeting the needs of all students in the classroom. So we will be having data chats three times a year. Right now, again in December or January, and then again in March or April. So that we can ensure that we're getting students ready for that end-of-year summative assessment. We're also going to be adopting a multi-tiered approach to intervention. So tier one intervention is going to be in the core lesson. So that first lesson that happens in the classroom, teachers are gonna be using strategies to ensure that 80% of students across learning, uh, styles can master that skill just from that first instructional delivery. Tier two intervention will involve those kids that you can see when you're teaching the lesson, didn't get it. So we pull those kids during independent practice so that they're not sitting at their desk practicing their errors during, um, independent practice. So teachers will be pulling small groups as a tier two intervention on a daily basis. Our tier three intervention will involve students leaving the classroom because we have an intervention teacher for math and we have an intervention teacher for language arts. So when those kids get pulled for that tier three intervention, teachers are going to use that time to meet the needs of students that are on grade level or above grade level. Because this year, we're not just gonna focus on the students who are performing below grade level. We're going to try to do that enrichment so that we're stretching those kids that are already meeting standards. We're also going to be focusing on, um, some math because that's an area where we need to do more growth. We're doing better in language arts than we are in math. So we will also be, uh, using some CGI strategies. We have been, um, getting trained, the, the teachers have gotten trained last year, but not everyone. So the administrators, myself and the two assistant principals are gonna go through the full three days of CGI training so that we can provide that instructional leadership. And all teachers will have been trained fully by October of 2024. So we're going to have our CGI leaders demonstrating the strategies that they've learned and that they've been implementing in their classrooms for their teams. And then we're going to give teachers an opportunity, a week or two, to try out the new strategy in their classrooms. And then we'll do learning walks, the administrators and some of the, um, the lead teachers, so that we can see how the implementation of the new strategy is going. Then we'll give teachers time in their PLCs to reflect on how it went. So that we can determine what the need is for the next professional development. And so that's kind of the cycle of CGI implementation that we're going to adopt this school year. Okay, so I'm gonna move on to supporting, uh, positive student behavior. Our attendance goal for this year is to have 96%. Um, the goal was 95% last year and we hit it. So we're very excited about that. So we always want to be doing better. So we're gonna go for 96% attendance this school year. We're going to, um, be partnering with PTA for attendance celebrations and, uh, perfect attendance awards. We're going to have, um, awards and celebrations for classes that have perfect attendance. And we're gonna try to recognize those classrooms on a weekly basis. We're also gonna put some interventions in place through the student success team and bring in those kids who are showing early signs of chronic absenteeism and have those SSTs with the families to find out what's going on and what further support we can provide to ensure that, you know, that attendance record is improving for every student. We have a community engagement goal that by May of 2025, there will be an increase in community engagement, communication and family connections. And we've already seen great progress with that. One of our goals was that 80% of our parents would attend back-to-school morning and we got 85% attendance, which was exciting. Um, we're gonna increase the number of parents who attend PTA meetings by 20%. We're going to try to increase the number of parents who attend parent university programs by 20%. We're just gonna try to increase that parent-teacher connection by ensuring that teachers have a positive, they initiate a positive communication with their parents on a monthly basis. So they're gonna have one positive interaction that they initiate with every student in their class each month. Just so we can make sure that parents aren't always being, um, notified, um, called, emailed when there's a problem, that the parents are reminded that their students are doing great things so that relationship remains strong. Okay, for supporting positive behavior, we also have a goal that by May 2025, all students will be able to identify the school behavior expectations and demonstrate skills on campus and in the community. And that there will be a 10% decrease in office and discipline referrals for administrator-managed behaviors. And the way we're doing this is primarily through PBIS. We have our Husky High Five Behavior Expectations that are all over the school. The Husky High Fives are posted in the hallways, in the classrooms, in the bathrooms, in the stairwells, at the lunch tables outside, in the cafeteria, in the office. They're everywhere. We have a PBIS professional development during the opening for the whole staff every single year. And we did it again this year for all the staff, classified and certificated staff members. We also have a PBIS assembly at the beginning of the year for each and every grade level where they meet the playground aides, they meet the, um, the counselor, the administrators, the, um, the lunch, the ladies who are serving lunch in the cafeteria. Everybody that's going to be supporting them, improving their positive behavior is a part of that opening assembly. And so that already happened. And we're, we're also implementing a, um, solution wheel. It's, um, a little wheel that each student will have to carry around with them. They're also gonna be posted in the classrooms where they're given alternative strategies for solving their own problems, like apologizing, taking turns, walking away. Like if you are in a negative interaction, you have the opportunity to just walk away from it or ignore a behavior. or ignore a behavior that's bothering you. So they have, it's a wheel that has all types of solutions that students can fall back on to help them solve their own problems. We're also implementing this year for students that are having some challenging behaviors that are coming to the office a lot. Because we have slips that are for major disruptions that end up being handled by administrators. When we have students that have several of those, we're going to start having them in group sessions twice a week with the school counselor, because we have a full-time school counselor and we want to make great use of her. So she's going to be meeting with those students and spending the time to go over more positive ways of responding to conflict and challenges. And then our final goal is by May of 2025, collaborative teams will redefine and implement PLC work and receive a score of proficiency as measured by the Danielson Framework. So you've heard us talk a lot about creating a PLC culture on the campus. So the teachers are going to identify one day of the week during their common planning time where they're going to meet every week. We're going to be a part of those meetings, the administrators. And the meetings will revolve around the four questions that Principal Kbar discussed. Which was looking at assessments, discussing the results, discussing what standards are going to need to be re-taught as a result of the assessments. What are we doing for kids who are not learning and what are we doing for kids who are exceeding standards? We're also going to make sure that the professional development calendar is a fluid document that's responsive to what we see happening in the classroom and that's responsive to what the data is telling us the need is. Okay, thank you. That concludes my presentation.
I just have one question.
Yes.
First of all, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here and I could see you're going to be a great partner with Mrs. Kbar, so thank you for that. I know that you know there's some work to be done. But I will say that what saddened me the most about the scores that I saw was that of the fifth graders. Because that means that when they're not scoring on their CASP scores, they're not able to go into honors classes the next year. And I worry about them. I worry that they have not been given the opportunity and the access that they deserve because the kids don't get that chance. So I just ask you to please focus on the fifth graders this year. So that when they're going into Mr. Waters' home, they have as many opportunities as possible for them.
Yes, so that was also a concern of mine when I looked at the data. But I want to assure you that one of the most robust conversations that came out of those meetings that I talked about where we looked at data and we talked about what are we going to do to improve, came out of the fifth grade team. And one of the things that they talked about implementing was bringing IABs into their monthly routines. So students can start to get exposed to not just, so they learn the skill. They learn the standard. But then how do they apply it in that test-taking situation? So making sure that their students don't just learn, but that they learn how to take that learning and apply it in the situation that they're going to meet on that final assessment. And the IABs monthly will help with that, I believe.
Does that mean that your fifth grade group of teachers felt like, oh, well, when we were testing the kids, they knew the material, but they ultimately didn't perform?
That was one of the things that came up, that they weren't able to apply their learning to that test-taking situation. Because sometimes, you know, the students are asked to do multiple things at one time. So it's not just testing one skill, but they have to read a question that's asking them to show what they know across multiple skills. So taking those IABs as a, not as a learning tool. So using the IABs to like maybe give to a small group of students and then letting them kind of tough it out together. And then going through it as a whole class to say, okay, how did you get the answer? What strategies did you use? And then maybe having the teacher, you know, give their input. Well, you could have tried to, you know, do this, this, or use this strategy. And then giving them another opportunity to take another similar type of assessment on the same skills. To see if they're getting it. Because sometimes it's not just about teaching the skill and moving on. But the students then have to integrate those skills to perform a complex task. So they, from the discussion I heard from the fourth and fifth grade and Dr. Seaman was present at that meeting, it seems like they didn't feel like maybe their students were given enough opportunities in class to practice.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. So I think Mr. Rich Waters is next.
They never really seem to make these for tall people. Feel like I need to be on my knees or something like that. It's not going to matter. Thanks. Thank you. Really only two things happen when you're six-four and a half. You hit your head places where other people don't or you have to bend down and give people hugs who are really short. I want to, to say thank you to the board for offering me this opportunity to stand before you as Principal Beverly Vista Middle School and the Honorable Dr. Breggie as well. It's been a pleasure working with the community and the staff and our kids over the last ten days. Obviously, it's an honor and so thank you. I want to start with that. As we get into, into our goals for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, I'm going to try not to say some of the things that my colleagues have because their goals are very similar between the schools, even though we are in the middle and they're in elementary. I am going to kind of combine two of the goals and talk to them both at the same time. So I want to speak to you about engaging students in learning and also in developing as professionals. So obviously, when you look at our CASP scores, they are less than what is expected. English is slightly stronger than the math. But we believe that two things are true. So we have a group of very smart children and we have some very talented professionals. And so when you look at their scores, there is definitely a disconnect between what we know the kids can achieve and what our teachers are giving them. And so what we want to do is bridge that disconnect. And we believe that focusing on the PLC is the way for us to do that. We have some teachers that are very talented and who are exercising best practice every day. And for the first time in the five, well, this being our sixth year of us being a dedicated middle school, we've been able to create a schedule that allows them opportunities to meet weekly with their core subject partners and talk about those best practices. We believe that in doing that in conjunction with our weekly staff and professional development opportunities, which we are doing as a large group, that we're going to be able to talk about those best practices and bring them to those children to help bolster the test scores. In addition to that, we are firmly committed in having these hard conversations on what it is that hasn't worked well and what things are in order to improve. So we are looking, as our colleagues are, at the NWA diagnostic testing. We are also using IABs. We're still continuing with our school's plan to implement the CERs by grade departments, as well as Alex diagnosing, which we're implementing during advisories. In addition to all that, we have what I believe a very robust program to help struggling students in our Core Academy. The challenge there is to get our families to support us when we recommend kids for those programs. Currently, in order for kids to be in that program, they have to sacrifice one of their electives. And I don't know if you guys are aware, but our families are very tied to their electives. So it's a challenge and it's a balancing, like we want to do what's best for kids. We just need their support in order for us to get there. In terms of moving on to supporting students and positive student behavior, we're really happy with some of the things that we're implementing. Just as a highlight, we just came out of our Bulldog Week where we took the students through a variety of lessons that were designed by department. And in those lessons, we talked about managing stress and anxiety and procrastination. We talked about our Bulldog expectations, what we expect to see, not only on our campus, but also out in the community. We also talked about student achievement and things that they can do in order to get help on campus. We have a robust tutoring opportunities that we offer Monday through Thursday after school. And so we want to encourage students to go and get that free help as opposed to them going out and paying a lot of money to work with personal tutors. So all of these things, we believe, will help student achievement. When kids are in class, they will do better. And so we've implemented the Smart Pass system last year. We're continuing on with that. And what we've noticed is that we see the trend of students eloping out of class to spend time buying shoes in a restroom. Instead, they're spending more time in class learning. And we know that if we can keep them in class and keep them focused in class, that the scores are going to improve. We are also continuing with our monthly admin chats. We just finished last Friday. And we are sending those messages, a summary of those conversations, home to parents and parent squares so they can continue those conversations at home with their children and reinforce the messaging that the school is giving them about what the expectations are. And then lastly, we are increasing our administrative visibility on campus. We are trying to be out in every single passing period to monitor student movement as they go from class to class. We're increasing administrative presence in classes so that we can be aware of what is being taught, how the students are acting in those classes and that we can help bolster teacher performance if we see something that we can help them with as they're going through their instruction. And then finally, just with the attendance goal, one of the things that we are doing, it's super important to us and we see that it's helped improve attendance, is that we are having, excuse me, I bombed over here. We're seeing, we're having our administrators and our counselors call families of students who are having tardyism or absenteeism problems. We believe that that personal touch is going to help convince families to get their kids to school on time and be in classes, which will again help student performance and academics. Any questions for me? Yes, ma'am.
Can you explain a little bit more about Alex?
Yes, so Alex is a program that we are implementing during advisories. Sorry, it's a problem. You'd think I have like some kind of vegetable up here or fruit. That allows students to go in and individually work and it targets areas where they are not that strong. So it gives them opportunity to practice and continue to build skills during a time when they would usually be using to study.
So then that means that who's directing the students to do what during advisory?
So.
The advisory teacher?
The advisory teacher allows them opportunities to do it. They can't, by contract, they're not allowed to teach during that time. So we offer them opportunities to work. And then what the site is doing is we're making kind of a fun competition type of thing. So the homerooms or the advisories that show the most progress, we're going to offer them incentives in order for them to want to participate.
And then there's an Alex elective?
There is not an Alex, that's just, Alex is a program.
Yeah, so I mean, when you were saying that, for example, the, you know, the families are very territorial.
The Core Academy elective, yes. So the Core Academy offers us an opportunity to bring kids in and help them in core subject areas where they might have challenges. And so we have a teacher working with them to support student achievement. It also will help them like with their executive functioning. So they'll plan out when to study, how to study and give them that kind of support. The problem that we've had and one of the challenges is encouraging the families to want to do that. And I see where they're, if you have a student who's really interested in in taking a foreign language or wants to be in STEM, they might have to give up one of those things and the families are reluctant to do that. But as a school, we also want our kids to be academically strong. And so we're offering them this as a choice for the kids who are struggling.
And this is in addition to Avid?
That is correct. So Avid is a program that we are, this year, focusing only in the eighth grade. The Core Academy classes focus on all three grade levels.
So then how are we going to move away from an elective being, you know, like a right to more of a privilege so that we can get these kids on track in the sixth grade? I mean, is it something that can be required? Because at the end of the day, the kids are going to have two, four, six electives over the course of three years. And if they don't get their math in, they don't have their math in.
Right. So one of the things that we discussed at the site is requiring students who have failed and forcing them into those Core Academy classes. And we're happy to do that. Just be forewarned, you guys might get a little bit more traffic at your door. But we feel like, as you say, an elective is not a right, it's an elective thing. Where the Core Academy class, I'm sorry, the core classes are things that students have to master in order to be ready for the high school and then go out into the world and be productive. My pleasure.
Well, first of all, I want to welcome you back, welcome you in that wonderful position.
Thank you.
I would like to compliment you on the carnival that you had on Friday. I thought it was really well done and the kids were really well behaved. And I think the presence of the administration on the field and being there really made a tremendous difference. And I think the kids really enjoyed it. I didn't see, you know, I'm sure there were long lines and so on, but they handled it beautifully and I was really happy to see all that. I want to make a little bit of a note about the after-school program. I don't know if I heard you mention that, I don't think I did. But that is again, something that I think the kids really benefit from. And I know that, I don't think enough kids take advantage of it. I think that's something that we should probably let them know. Because, you know, most of the kids, they get out of school at three fifteen and they have forty-five, fifty minutes that they can do something and maybe take advantage of that tutoring that can help them after school. And I think that it would like to see if that really progresses with, for the kids to take advantage of that. Because I think it would really help them.
You are in all things a genius. So one of the things that we're doing with Smart Pass is we are having kids, when we start the after-school tutoring, that they sign into tutoring so we can keep track of the students that are attending. We can go back and give them positive feedback to their families and the students who are not. We can have continuing conversations with their families and try to convince them to attend.
And then one more question for you, Mr. Waters, about the Alex program. How do kids find out about that?
So we have Alex licenses and the teachers get the kids signed in. And so the kids will all know about it. It's something that will be discussed in the advisory classes.
They get it through the teacher then?
That's correct.
And I'd just like to point out the Avid program, though it's a wonderful, wonderful program. You have a student that takes a foreign language in addition to the four core subjects. They only have room for one elective and that's a, although that foreign language is their elective, they have to make a choice and some kids do not choose to take the Avid because they'd rather have an elective. I think that's a problem and I don't know how to do anything about it, but I know that that could be a problem.
Yeah, you know, unfortunately, we only have a seven-period day. I wish that we could have a ten-period day and still be at school until three fifteen. It's unfortunate in life that sometimes we do have to make certain choices. My plug to the community is this, that Avid program, when we went to that training this summer and we listened to these students and what they were able to do and the study, the study strategies that they were given, it was absolutely incredible. Every single one of them, to a person, was just able to conduct themselves at such a high level. It is a win. I would encourage anyone who is interested to look into that program and get your kid into it. It's, it was mind-blowing. I really was blown away. Anyone who's not a believer should go to that conference and go through the training and listen to the kids who've been through it. And they will, it's a sell. They'll want to be in that program.
Mr. Waters.
Thank you.
Could I?
Pleasure.
I just, sorry, just want to follow up on the Avid. Can you teach Avid? Can you send in Avid instruction into the advisories?
So the advisory classes, the way they sit, we can't do that. The advisory classes, the teachers are, by contract, can't.
Not by those teachers. If they can't, they can't. But if, I've heard such good things about Avid and when I read it and when I hear about the program, it's some, those are the skills that I use in my professional life all the time. And so it almost, you know, is a shame that it's not available to everybody. And so the advisory teacher is not my concern. It's delivering the material one way or another to the students.
So if I may, one of the things that I think you'll really appreciate is when we have our staff meetings and we're developing our staff professionally, the people who are leading that development The people who are leading that development are actually our Avid teachers and so they are bringing the Avid strategies into those lessons. And as they teach the staff, they're modeling some of the Avid strategies during that meeting. So what, I don't want to speak for Dr. Seaman, but I would imagine as time goes on, that Avid program will grow. And we'll get more and more teachers trained and you'll start to see that in individual classes as time goes on.
And then do you think it would help you if we as a board forbid foreign language until the seventh grade? So you can take care of business in the sixth grade?
You know, listen, I don't want to speak for smarter people than me, so I I want to say this. There are some students out there who. They're lingual, like they want to go far and and wide with language, so I hate to deny them that opportunity to do that. If that's their thing.
But let's think about it.
I I would say that I I do sometimes caution families about taking foreign language in the sixth grade. Because it, because of the rigor that's involved and the fact that there is testing involving assessments, it it is almost like taking another. Core class.
Sorry, it's Simone's bedtime.
Well, tell them I said hi. So it is a, that's something we have to be really careful about. I don't know if I want to forbid it because again, I don't want to take away some kids' dream. And this is their thing to pursue that foreign language.
Because we have enough time between seventh, eighth grade, ninth, tenth, eleventh and twelfth grade. To finish five years worth of foreign language. I mean, I'm not.
It's definitely worth the conversation.
Yeah, this is not the time, but it's something that I have been marinating on and the more I hear about. To be continued.
Thank you for everything you shared. One quick question, it's a complex issue, but you know, there are middles, a lot of middle schools deal with bullying and whether it's. Really bullying in the definition, and I know there is definitely a definition and sometimes it's used loosely, but. You know, there there are discussions about, oh, I feel like my kid was bullied, you know, is bullied at the middle school. Can you tell me about that and and what are some of the guardrails you have in place? Because there are some concerns about it, as you know, okay.
Okay, so I want to be fair because I do think that bullying sometimes, the term bullying is the silver bullet that could kill every vampire that's out there. What we see is at times it is just inappropriate behavior.
Or benignly insensitive. Sometimes I see that too with kids. You know, they say something stupid that you wouldn't say if you were grown up because you knew, you know, it's hurtful. But they're, they're kids and I mean, that's not always the case. Sometimes it's much more.
And I would also make the case that just because something isn't bullying doesn't mean that it does, it's not worthy of some corrective behavior. So what I do challenge people is to be careful about using the word because inappropriate is inappropriate. One of the, one of the challenges at the middle school is that. Not all of us are accurate retellers of stories. And so frequently the conversations we have at home may not necessarily reflect everyone's perspective of what happened at school. And so one of the things that we're trying to get our kids to do is to come in and have conversations either with the counselors or the grade level administrators or myself. To talk about what has happened so that we can nip bad behavior in the bud. One of the things that we've noticed is that the broken window theory is that when something is broken and you don't address it, things just get worse. And so what we want to do, how we see ourselves is this, we are the AAA truck that's driving around in the neighborhood. And your car's not working and you're watching us drive by and you're not asking for help and so it's frustrating for us because we want to help you. We are also having ongoing conversations with the children through our admin chats about not or being kind with one another. And and those types of things. So we're continually having those conversations. We just need people to partner with us in order to help us.
Yeah, I want to add one thing to what you're saying because it's what's really important and this is just something that we found through a lot of the PTA and PTSA meetings. Is that there, there's a lot that happens outside of school too with social media and and for the most part, phones are off. So a lot of this happens outside of of school time is to not wait. And so parents to to join us, partner with us, but also don't be afraid to contact another parent. I mean, what we're finding is that that people are waiting, like I'll just wait and I'll tell the school. Which is great and that's fine to get a heads up, but we really need more active involvement that it's okay as a community. We need to be able to say, we don't do that here. And that's a very, very tough thing to be able to conquer that. But in order to do that, we we have to not be afraid to contact another parent. Or if another parent sees something that's happening on a weekend at an event, to go and correct that and not always wait for the school. We have a lot of parents that do do that. So and and it's very helpful to us when parents are that actively involved. But we do need some help in that, don't wait for school to start then on Monday. Then to give us, you know, some information that's happening outside of school. We want to partner together.
Okay, thank you. Another, thank you for addressing that and I think that is something that we have to constantly monitor by by virtue of the the age, that is. The times, the fact that there is, you know, internet stuff that goes on in the evening, hopefully not at school, you know, but. I think that there's a lot of factors at play that make episodes of bullying or or just unkind treatment that can be particularly harmful for kids in in your grade. And so I encourage you to continuously, you know, sharpen the skills on looking at that. The other thing I want to say is just going back to the the interventions. Unfortunately, in my experience of knowing, you know, middle school kids and I suppose younger as well is that. Unfortunately, a lot of the kids who are not good at math, right? They're generally not a fan of math. And so you add that to the fact that you're expecting them to go to an after school. Intervention, I'm just saying because they're human, you expect them to go, you know, when it's three o'clock, most people, most of their friends aren't doing it, they're tired. I remember being really tired at three o'clock and the last thing I wanted to do was something like math. So I just, I guess I'm saying that because I recognize that it's one of the obstacles you have for, you know, taking some of these kids and bringing them up to speed. So that, you know, the aggregate of our our scores are better, et cetera, and for them to be successful. So I think that it's like a two-prong, a two-pronged strategy, which is that. One, you know, we have to have those parents on board because there's a lot of parents and I forgive them for this, but the, you know, the little Johnny says. No, there's no way I'm going to do that. I want to go home. I'm really tired and and the parents say, yeah, I don't blame you. I know you're tired. But we need, there needs to be, you know, the parent education piece where we're like, your kid really is falling behind. And once they go to ninth grade and they don't know their fractions, forget it. They will never have more than a C in math, you know, whatever. But there's some parent learning there, but there's also some incentivizing to make it an appealing thing for kids to go and not feel singled out. And to go even though they're really tired on the Thursday afternoon at three o'clock. And that also means supervision of that interventionist because sometimes I have found in other school districts. That the teacher who is appointed to give those interventions is sort of the least monitored. So it just sort of falls by the wayside. You go and check in with them and they say, oh, you know, you know, this kid hasn't been coming. Nine out of the, you know, four out of the ten kids hasn't been showing up. And we're like, well, then why, why haven't you, you know, followed up? Because there isn't a tight monitoring system on that intervention person? You know, they're not, they're not on the radar of the rest of the complement of of faculty. So that's another issue. I feel like. You know, I don't know if you can weigh in on that, but I see those as two factors.
I want to pay props to a legend of our community, Merle Bauer. She was that intervention teacher who. If she put you in that class, the parents are like, you're going to be in that class and all those kids did great. I I think your point's well taken and that's something that we will definitely consider and and act on at the site. I also want to give props to our teachers because at our site, they do a great job of making themselves available at nutrition and lunch. For any kid who wants help who doesn't want to stay after school. So those interventions are in place. We have really helpful teachers who want, they're invested in the kids and they want to see them do well. So I want to put that out there too and maybe that's, we can do a better job of of putting that out there to the parent community to know that that is also.
Going to take some, I hate to use the word force, but it's going to be some structure, you know, it's a partnership with them and we can, we can, you know, we can give our. Grade A skills, but if we don't have some sort of partnership, I'm not saying that we don't completely, but it's going to be difficult. You know, it's hard to get your kid to do something they don't like and they're not good at, so.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may add, sorry. So you said that you have teacher interventions at lunch as well. Is that the same as like the Avid program?
No, it's totally separate. So at lunchtime, the teachers are making themselves available for any student who might need help. So typically they will ask them, hey, just let me know because sometimes they want to have lunch too and they'll schedule an appointment. But they've been absolutely wonderful about helping any kid who wants to get the help.
Okay, well, yeah, that answered my, that answered my question. Thank you.
My pleasure. Good. With that, I want to introduce the Honorable Drew Stewart, Principal of Beverly Hills High School.
Ooh, that was cold.
I am as bald, but not as tall. All right. Board of Education, thank you so much for having us here tonight. I would kind of just jump right into our data. Which is on page one of the BHHS goals. And so kind of take you through that and then closing out some of last year's data. And then begin to talk to you a little bit about what our plan is for this year, both in academics as well as the other two sort of umbrella topics. So if you can look at the CASP data, which starts there, it talks about the CASP cohort data. Twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. One of the things that we've been talking about tonight is sort of comparing a year over year, meaning like how the juniors did in twenty-three. Versus how the juniors did in twenty-four. What we have here is actually looking very specifically at the cohort of kids that were both testing when they were in eighth grade. And then when they get to us in ninth grade. And then we'll also talk a little bit, it's not in this chart, but a little bit about what it was kind of year over year. Between twenty-three and twenty-four. Part of the reason why it's important for us to look at the cohort data and one of the unique pieces of the high school that I know you all know. But a lot of times our community doesn't necessarily know. And I actually had a question related to this at our PTSA meeting on Friday. Is why are we having our students as ninth graders take NWEA a week or two into their high school career? If they just took the CASP last spring in eighth grade? Why would we do that? Isn't the CASP a diagnostic for where they sit? And the answer to that, the simple answer to that is yes, they did just take that diagnostic. The more complicated answer for us in high school is that they're not going to take that same diagnostic again, at least in English and math until they're juniors. So they go from taking that CASP test every single year into really skipping two years in the case of English and math. And then taking it again as juniors and then now skipping it for one year as freshmen and then taking the science as sophomores. Gets even weirder because for the last several years, they were taking the science as both seniors and sophomores until we could get all the seniors tested in it. So starting this coming year, our sophomores only are going to be taking the science. So it provides a little bit of context for why it's a little bit trickier to kind of chart these kids. If we aren't using a diagnostic like NWEA because ultimately otherwise we're waiting around for three years. To see how they've improved in English and in math. And so is NWEA the perfect diagnostic for CASP? It it's pretty strong. But we're also going to talk about some changes that we're going to make this year. So is if we look at the the cohort from last year in twenty-three, twenty-four. Our juniors in ELA, they dropped in English Language Arts from where they were in eighth grade. They were at seventy-one percent. Meeting or above standard and then last year they tested at sixty-four percent. Now. Generally speaking, over time, kids tend to decrease cohorts of kids tend to decrease the older they get as they matriculate through the grades. Not an excuse. And in fact, as you can see there, our math students or the same students in math. Actually improved from their eighth grade scores to last year and our math students also improved from the students that took it in twenty-three. To twenty-four as well as the actual cohort that tested back in twenty-one and then in twenty-four. So we saw some gains in math. We don't love seeing that number sit below fifty percent and so we're going to talk about ways in which we're going to attack that. But we did see some growth in math, though we did see the drop in English. And Remy, to ask your question, that may or may not be why those tables are missing from the third floor patio. So we can talk about sort of the incentives that we're going to work with. And yes, we have actually already ordered new tables or actually we're in the process of it with Mr. Haas, so. We will be getting new replacement tables that'll match the other new tables on campus.
Thank you.
So but getting back to the to the notion of incentives in just a second. So as we look at the CASP cohort data. For these, oh, and then, excuse me, science. So they didn't have a science diagnostic in twenty-one. They had started rolling out the CAST kind of after that. Also, it was kind of a COVID year, so. Our twenty-three, twenty-four data in science is thirty-eight percent and it is not anything close to where we would want it to be. And so we'll sort of talk about and look at why that may be and how our science teachers in particular are approaching that. If we look at the CASP cohort data for our goals for this coming year. Eighth graders in twenty-twenty-two, our current juniors scored at seventy-two percent in ELA and so our goal for them is to. Get us back up into the seventies where we had been for quite some time in our ELA scores. To get to seventy-five percent, meet or exceeding standards for math. We have a modest goal of forty-nine percent, raising the math. The students in their math scores from forty-six to forty-nine. Obviously, we hope to go higher than that, but at least that is our goal, a three percent increase. And then as you can see here, this group of students did take the science diagnostic, the CAST. In eighth grade and they tested at fifty-two percent. And so our goal is similarly a three percent increase this year for. Our tenth graders and only tenth graders that are going to be taking the science test. And we think the cohesiveness. Of tenth graders only taking this and not tenth and twelfth and having to hunt the different groups down, we think will just by itself help us. But again, that is our goal for our science. So if you go to the next page, it talks about our AP scores. And so I kind of want to talk about. AP, our SAT scores, which are the two next data points in relation to CASP. Our AP scores are preposterously high and they have often been and they continue to be. Though our students with, if you look at that first bar graph on the left. Though in twenty-twenty-three, eighty-seven percent of our students passed with a three or taking an AP exam, passed with a three or better. It dropped three percent to eighty-four percent, which is still crushing any national average in all of the tests. And certainly sort of in the aggregate. But if you look at to the right hand column where it actually looks at total AP students, number of exams. We increased number of students accessing AP curriculum by almost forty. And we had the number of exams go up by over a hundred and twenty. So we're getting more kids into AP classes, more kids are taking AP tests and for the fact that our scores dipped only three percent, given that. Significant increase in kids accessing that curriculum, we're very proud about. And then if you look at our SAT scores, we had a really good year in the SAT. We had two students with perfect scores. We had twenty-five kids with a thirteen, thirty and above, three students with a fifteen hundred and above. And I think you're going to see soon, without giving away too much of a preview, an enormous spike in students qualifying for the National Merit Scholarship. And so we'll be recognizing those students at a meeting like this in the future, not not too far from now. So why juxtaposing our pretty incredible successes in AP, strong success in SAT with our CAPS scores is. One of the things that we're going to work on, and we've talked a lot about it here tonight, is parent education. Our students, when there is incentive for them individually and in intrinsic or extrinsic reward. For doing well in an AP or an SAT in terms of college applications, applying to college, getting in. And then potentially even with AP paying for college courses because it replaces the need to take those classes in college, our kids knock it out of the park. So our kids are generally speaking, learning at high levels. Our our teachers are doing a phenomenal job. When you walk into classrooms every day, they are doing. Really, really rigorous work. And so why is there such a discrepancy between how they're performing in AP and SAT and CASP? And I think in a large part, it comes down to motivation. And so, you know, Remy, you brought it up in terms of talking about incentives and I think we can no longer just. Pretend like that's not a piece of it. So we need to, as a school site, work really hard on educating our families, educating our students on why these tests matter. Some people mentioned that in our PTSA meeting on Friday, like can we talk to them about how it makes our school more competitive in the college application process? When screeners are looking in that, well, you're from Beverly Hills High School, so we know your education is worth more than this school potentially. And so we are going to be going through the process of really kind of a year-long campaign on educating our students and families on why these tests are important and they matter. Not saying it's the single reason, we are absolutely going to be looking at ways to grow our scores and our work through. Some of the bullet points that you'll see in our action plan. So in addition to talking to our students and our families about. Why the tests are important and motivating them and coming up with even more incentives than we started with last year. What else are we going to be doing? We're going to continue our work with NWEA so we can hopefully identify learning gaps for kids right away at the beginning of the year. And our teachers can begin through their data chat process to speak to each other and then individually with their students about their their goals. For an individual kid and helping that kid set goals for themselves, but also in the aggregate. Where are major gaps in these kids in general? Like are they missing a huge component of a grammar piece? Is, are they really struggling with the math concept? So a teacher can then hopefully have a high amount of leverage to to look at that. We're also in, all of our staff, or excuse me, all the principals up here have already talked about our PLC culture. We're going to be. And have already begun our PLC journey at the high school. We really had limited time to meet in departments over the past several years. I am basically giving back all staff. I am basically giving back all staff meeting time to Wednesday mornings so that our departments can meet in their PLCs, and they've already begun to come up with their department non-negotiables that they believe all students that are leaving their department need to have. And the next step for them is going through and finding the most important standards, tying those standards to student success on these tests, and really making sure that we're focusing on those high-leverage pieces of instruction and in that teaching and learning so that we can begin to move the needle as well in our instruction to try to get our students, I think, testing more, that is more representative of what they're actually learning and what they're capable of in the classroom. In addition to that, we were going to be providing targeted instructional intervention for students with IEPs through several different new intervention models, as well as students in our English Language Learner Program. We need to make sure that we are not leaving anybody behind, and so we're going to be having targeted instructional interventions in those particular groups. We're also going to be focusing on literacy across the curriculum. So we look at our ELA scores and they're going down. And so a lot of people out there might say, well, look, they just need to read another novel. That's not really what it is. It's really indicative of the fact that it kind of across the board, and I, people far smarter than me will know why this is maybe happening generationally. Kids aren't reading as much, and they're just not, and even to the point of, like, we'll talk with teachers and they're saying, the students, I don't know how to do this problem. Did you read the directions? No. And so really and truly, it is a matter, of course, there is a burden on our English teachers, but it really is all of our teachers and all of us in administration and counseling across the board is a focus on literacy because the one thing that stood out the most in our NWEA and our CASP scores that was concerning was our drop in reading. And so that is one fundamental area that we have to attack, and it'll have great success in our math scores as well. Math is more conceptual. It's got a lot of, you know, you have to read a lot of things within the math problem to be able to begin to attack and solve it, and so focusing on literacy, I think, is going to be a major bang for our buck this year as we go through. The other pieces that we want to do, we want to get more kids into AP classes. I would love to see our passing at a three or higher decrease even more if it means we're getting ten, twenty, a hundred, two hundred more kids to the access of the AP curriculum. It really is a life changer for kids to be able to have access to curriculum at that level. It puts them in a position to be successful in college. And ultimately, and eventually, hopefully, we'll talk someday down the line about really challenging every student at our school to try at least one AP class. So I'm a huge proponent of that. We're creating, we are bringing the Avid program on board. You asked a lot of really good questions about Avid. We're incredibly excited. I come from a school that had Avid prior to my coming here, and I've seen the benefits significantly, and so if we were able to get forty, you know, get our numbers up to forty freshmen, and then we add forty each year, we're going to have a hundred and sixty kids on campus speaking this language. But to the question that was earlier, how do we get that on a school-wide level? Like, how do we infuse those strategies? And there are schools that are avid schools, and they build that into their entire framework, and there's an expectation, and so ultimately, we'll be having conversations as we continue our avid journey and we grow that of like, adding an avid strategy as a school-wide instructional goal. Like, this is something we're going to focus on this year, whether it's organization or note-taking or whatever it may be, so that we can begin to have that diffuse out to the entire school so that it's not just those kids in that elective class. So that, so we'll have a lot of leverage there as well. Smart Pass, Mr. Waters talked about that. We are basically at full implementation. We're purchasing some new kiosks for the classrooms to make it better. We've instituted our tardy room. We had about a hundred and fifty students, I think, tardy on the first day that we implemented the tardy room with Smart Pass. It was a line around the building. They missed almost an entire class. It was panic in the streets. And by the next day, it was cut by almost seventy percent, and today I feel like there was hardly a handful of kids that were tardy. So habituating kids to making sure that they're on time, having this as an incentive, Smart Pass, to keep kids in class engaged in their learning is important. We're also going to use it to track office hour usage during period seven, as well as lunch tutoring, when we get that up and running closer to the five-week mark. And then the last thing that we're going to do, that we're going to continue doing, is our student review meetings. Finding and targeting our students that are struggling academically, meeting with their families and grade levels, and having that sort of longitudinal process with them, and again, that was a lot of some good quantitative success with that last year, but a lot of qualitative success. The families were super grateful and are not used to having the school reach out to them, inviting them in to talk with them about how they can get their student back on track. So we're going to continue that as well. In terms of supporting positive student behavior, and I'll try to go through these pretty quickly, we have the same goal, ninety-five percent in attendance. We're excited about that. And then for us, the two big things that we're starting this year that we haven't done in the past, we're going to do that, continuing SDIS, continuing a lot of the attendance protocols that we started last year that we found to be very successful. When kids know we're paying attention about it, they start to meet our expectations better. And then the two things that are, we're really excited about, or three things, is we have a new position on campus this year that was piloted somewhat at the middle school last year. We're calling it our Student Support Specialist, or Dean of Students. And that person is going to be joining us to work with students that are sort of, are highest rates of recidivism in terms of behavior problems. They're going to become a part of this person's caseload, and they're going to be working with these students that need the most support behaviorally on an ongoing basis until we can hopefully sort of graduate them out of that program, if you will. This person will also be going through and working, the person is Ms. Dar, for those of you that know her, former principal in our district, so she has a wealth of knowledge in both administration and in teaching. She's just a goldmine. And so she's also going to be coaching and providing coaching cycles for teachers that might need help with classroom management or sort of working with our students in that way. And then the last two pieces are, we're going to be fully implementing our check-in and checkout program through PBIS. And students will get into that program if they're struggling academically, with attendance, or behaviorally, one or all three of them, and then again, similarly, they're going to have to speak to every one of their teachers each day. They can't hide. They're going to have to be able to have conversations with adults and to know that their adults care about them and be checking in with our dean and our PBIS team as well to make sure that we're checking on their progress. And then the last thing is, we're going to be doing and exploring restorative justice protocols. So we saw an email today about doing some training for some of our staff there. This is a push in California Education Code. And we have seen students that have been at odds with each other, especially over the last year. There is a lot of strife happening around the world and even in our community, and so the goal here is to help students be able to solve problems amongst themselves, facilitated by adults but led by students, and so we're very excited about that. Last one is developing professionally, kind of baked in, and I don't want to talk a ton more than what my colleagues have already mentioned, but we are implementing PLCs. We're already underway. We're excited about that. We are really excited about the Danielson Framework for Teaching and having those ongoing conversations with our staff. And so in addition to that, we're going to be continuing some of the other work that we're doing. Our science teachers are continuing their work in NGSS, hopefully aligning more closely to what our students will be seeing on the CAST. So we hope that that will have some leverage for student performance on the CAST. And then also, we have special education teachers are going to be engaging in some intervention that I had mentioned before, specifically something called a SMARTS curriculum, which will help students that need with executive functioning. And then ultimately and eventually, we're also going to be doing a little bit more work with our special education teachers and some other types of math and reading intervention. And then we will also continue our new teacher acculturation through our lunches, sort of lunch and learns with our coaches to get our teachers, our new teachers, up to speed with the culture of our school. So those are, I'm really excited about all the things that we're doing this year. Love the idea, Remy, to partner with ASB and incentives. We don't have to take away any more tables. And just kind of really excited to dig into the work, as you know, as Mr. Waters said, and as I stated earlier, some of our numbers are not necessarily where they want to be. I don't think they're reflective of how strong our students are academically, or how good the teaching and learning is on our campus, because we can see that borne out in a lot of our other data with AP and SATs, and so now it's really trying to get down to where we can improve our instructional practices and then also motivate our students and families to take the testing seriously.
Remy, you want to say something? I like your commentary from the student level. You certainly don't have to, but.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to say that I'm not sure if it's the same for iReady, but for NWEA with what I remember, the scores are like, in the, like, says like one thousand thirteen fifty, like one thousand three hundred fifty. So I think other than incentives, also another motivation factor could be that students can see what that score actually means, like, does it, what would it mean according to the SAT, like, oh, then if I got a thirteen fifty on NWA, NWEA, then according to the SAT, that'd be like a twelve hundred score.
So how it translates.
Yeah, how it translates, and what the score actually means on what level you are. Oh, you like, next year, if you're like reaching this school, then you can get into honors level. I think that would motivate a lot of people to be like, oh, I'm actually really close to reaching that level, so why not push my standards and the stat, like, the status quo and get to that there.
It's a really good idea. Thank you for saying that. I'm going to mention one other thing. The one thing I failed to mention, maybe I did, I blacked out, I don't know. But for our juniors, they're going to be taking, we're going to be not doing NWEA this year and going back to the IABs, the interim assessment blocks that is actually provided from CASP, so that it will most closely mirror what the students will be taking in the spring. So I think that only strengthens your point that we need to make the NWEA data translatable and understandable to students for like how it may be. They can more closely see how it might diagnose where they're at for some of these other tests. So I think that's a great part of the motivation for CASP. I think if we can make that happen, that's a really, really good idea, Remy.
Thank you.
Judy, Ms. Mancherry?
Hi, Mr. Stewart. Thank you for your presentation.
Of course.
I just wanted to remind you of the discussion Dr. Seaman and I had earlier in regard to narrowing down the reviews with the grade level or subject level math teachers as an example. I mean, when you're talking about twelve hundred kids and you're meeting with the teachers for all twelve hundred, all the math teachers at one time, for example, I don't know how you can really get into it with them, but I would think that if you subdivide into subject, you actually might have a chance of, you know, having it be applicable and having those teachers assist one another.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Sorry, can I add one more thing?
Absolutely.
Also with what you were saying, Mr. Stewart, about how the AP scores, either, even though it went from eighty-seven percent to eighty-four, you have to look at the numbers of students taking it, and I feel like that also correlates to all the elementary schools and BVMS, how more students could be joining that grade level, that cohort, and that ultimately affects how the scores will be if like, that student who joined is not as highly ranked as the other students who are already in the district and learned like everything they need to know for that test. It may lower the score or increase it, vice versa, so yeah, I think that was a great addition to what you said, and also how the AP scores, I mean, the AP testing, how we provide now students to take the AP exam without any additional cost. That has been a significant factor for students to really take an AP and feel encouraged that they, and motivated that they can actually take it this time without anything standing in their way.
Absolutely, and I want to thank Ms. Cabelas for bringing that idea to us, and then for the board for actually allowing us to do that and funding it. I think it's a game changer, and I'm just as big of a proponent of getting as many kids into AP as we can. I know it scares some of the teachers because they love their amazing pass rates, but I will take a drop in pass rates in addition of number of kids taking the test.
I was just going to say, and I know Rochelle's going to return. I do think that sometimes these tests, I agree with you, aren't always indicative of just of how much are the aptitude of students in math and English. I mean, there are many of us who just aren't good test takers. I'm not a good test taker. I test usually like, low average to average. So, you know, but that doesn't say a lot. Like, I can really study a subject and do fine, but that comes back to the fact that there are test-taking skills. So I don't know if we can paint a broad swath and say, you know, for those cohorts that didn't score, you know, very well, if that necessarily means, you know, they're not learning math or they're not good at math, it could be that because we don't want to teach to the test, which is, you know, a negative connotation, and we've heard that for twenty years now. Don't teach the test because it waters down the content and it makes it less exciting for just looking at how to take a test. However, it merits saying that we should build in test-taking skills. And I don't know how much content before these tests is actually presented in the format like a test, multiple choice, or I know it's not necessarily multiple choice anymore, right? The CASP isn't always.
It's not, and it's adaptive, and it takes you on your own personal journey based on how you're doing on the last question.
Right, it's adaptive. It shifts based on how badly you did or how great you did. It can launch you ahead to, you know, a couple more questions, which is great, but I still think that there is a test-taking skill that, you know, we need to address so that those who are, so that the test is really a valid measure for us as to how much a child, a student has learned or has mastered in those subjects, and not really just a measure of their test-taking skills.
Absolutely, and that's a hundred percent, and that's a large part of the reason why, especially with our juniors, we're going back to the IABs rather than an NWEA, because they will actually get to practice with all of the tools that are hyper-specific to the CASP, like, how do I use the calculator tool? And like, so just as fundamental as that, like, it looks the same. I know how to use these tools. It will lower their sort of effective filter before they go into it, so. Agreed. Test-taking skills in general, and we're happy to be bringing the IABs back so that we can address it with that as well.
Ms. Marcus, did you care to say anything, or would you like?
I just want to thank you for your report. I do like to think that those scores in math, I don't know how you can set them up, especially in eleventh grade and in the CASP. I know that that's a concern to me. But I guess I do agree with you on the motivational factor about it. The kids are, they're checked out already, sort of, and those scores aren't going to affect anything as far as they're concerned, so they don't particularly think they have to excel at them, and unfortunately, they would be great parameters for us to use, but they don't see it that way. They help us, but it's not for them. That's the problem.
Well, that's what we're going to work on this year. We're going to try to get them to understand why it does still matter.
I know that after PT offered them some sort of a carnival to get their, I don't know if it was before or after, I think it was after they took the test.
It was after, and we went back and forth on which would be more effective. We'll talk to students this year about which is better. I got, Mr. Chang got hypothermia in the dunk tank.
I would have thought it should come before, but to maybe be an incentive, but maybe they should have way of grading it right away, and if they do well, then they get the ticket to go to the carnival, something like that. You can't do because you can't grade them next to them.
I love it, and I'm, we are open to any and all ideas, so we'll be talking about this in our Secondary Education Council, our department chairs, we're talking about this in our PAC, which I think, are you on Principal's Advisory Committee? No, you're too busy with this. We'll be talking about it in our PAC, where we did come up with incentives like the CASP honor cords last year for graduation and things like that. So it will be an ongoing conversation for sure. But yeah.
That's an idea, some sort of a honorarium on if they do well on that CASP, or if they get to the better, exceed a certain kind of a ribbon or something like that. If it can be graded fast enough to get that, that would be the thing.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, so we move on to facilities services goal of excellence.
Okay, wow, I'm really short. I need to be even lower. Okay. Well, our department has a ninety-one point plan that we'd like to present tonight. No, I'm kidding, of course. No, we are are going to go over some of our departments and start with the facilities, and I'll keep it to the exciting points of the plan. So one of the things that we'll be working on this year, and we work on actually every year, is our five-year deferred maintenance plan. It's something that we have to keep up for the district to make sure that we're addressing the bigger needs that that need to be programmed, and so the district currently contributes about eight hundred thousand dollars a year for the deferred maintenance plan, so that's something that we're doing throughout the year. We're identifying it, we're reviewing it, and making sure that's all going forward well. We're also looking at our work order requests to make sure that those are being handled on time. It's so crucial for us to address the needs of our school sites on time and as quickly as possible. And so we're doing that as well. Another big overarching thing that we're doing is the facilities master plan. That's something that needs to be updated frequently for the district. We're doing that as well. And that's looking at all of our facilities' needs to include construction and deferred maintenance. And so what we're doing is looking at the costs of that, then we're going to prioritize which is the most important, which is the less important, and which is the urgent ones that need to be taken care of immediately. We'll bring that to the board, put together a plan to address those needs as well. And amongst that, we also have our FIT reports that we do every year to make sure that our schools are excellent. You know, I'm happy to say last year, they were all excellent and high excellent, so that's great news for our districts, and of course, we want to make sure that their schools are always clean and they're always safe and in compliance with any sort of standards that we need to be in compliance with. So those are the major goals we have for facilities. So I'll move on to the next one, unless you have a question. I'll move on to the next. The next item we have is maintenance, I'm sorry, the next item we have is construction. I'm sorry, the next item we have is construction. So a lot of exciting things happening with construction. We just opened El Rodeo. That's a, it's super exciting and. Yeah, here's some faint clapping in the background, but yeah, we 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 opened El Rodeo. Yeah, 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 we, that helps out. We need to wake up a little bit. Um, and so now coming up, this here is B three, B four. So that's super exciting. Um, you'll be able to see performances at that. It's it's awesome. Yeah. That, you see Drew woke up right there. So that's awesome. Uh, B three, B four, um, we're excited about that and the grand lawn is also coming on board. In the summer of twenty twenty-five. So, I mean, right now it's, it looks like dirt, but it's going to be a whole grand lawn. It's gonna be great. And we're also planning out the future constructions at the high school. Uh, and of course, we're wanting to strengthen our community. And our uh public updates to make sure the community knows when all this is coming online. But a lot of big things happening in twenty twenty-five. B three, B four, grand lawn, and some really solid plans for building C, the new Conheim. So that's going to be really exciting. All of that's coming to fruition and that's part of our plan. And of course, the facility master plan is also part of that. So that's the facility side. So we'll move on to um uh uh the facilities and construction. We'll move on to fiscal services. In the fiscal services department. We've really done a good job of establishing industry standard procedures. We have to make sure we keep those updated because, you know. The federal government's always changing their mind about what they want from us, so we're always having to adapt. And so we're doing that very uh quickly. We're also making sure that our fiscal reports are sound and that they're accurate and that they're I I at least under budget, which is what we're aiming for. Um, and so you'll see evidence of that here in a little bit. We also wanna enforce zero-based budgeting techniques. We've been doing that already kind of covertly, but now we're going to be a little bit more. Uh, uh, you know, uh, forward with that concept. And of course, professional development for our department. We wanna make sure that our, all of our staff. Understands what's going on and as things evolve and regulations evolved as far as it pertains to gap. Uh governmental accounting standards and all of that, we have to make sure our staff is following those. I'm happy to say that we're doing a pretty good job in the financial department. Uh, we just met with our auditors probably about, um, not probably, a week ago we met with our auditor. So far, no findings, so we're really excited about that. Um, and finally, uh, technology. Um, technology is a really important portion of our plan. Um, that we are looking forward to implementing as well. Some of the items that we're looking at and perhaps a really important one is the establishment of a secure data center. Uh, we are looking outside of the district to do that, an off-site data center solution that meets the district needs. A lot of districts are trending towards this because the. Uh, having to keep um an infrastructure for a of, for a data center is very costly. So many districts are going off. Off uh center uh and 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 using outside uh off-site uh centers to be able to house their data. And so that's really important for us in our technology department to make sure that we're doing that. We're also doing everything we can to strengthen our cybersecurity. As you know, a lot of uh districts have been attacked um and and we know the consequences of that, so we're doing everything possible to strengthen our cybersecurity. Uh, we're trying to standardize our IT support as well. And also some upgrades to our IT infrastructure. We wanna make sure our access points for indoor and outdoor use are enhanced. And that the wifi uh is is working accurately at our sites. And finally, uh nutrition services. And we talked a little bit earlier today about nutrition services, but uh one of the things we'll work on this year is the implementation of the Health E Pro. Menu planning software. This will help us to really plan our menus and make sure that we're addressing the needs of our community. And that the me- that the food that we're taking in is appropriate and meets the standards that we need. We're also utilizing our kit funds. Kit funds are kitchen infrastructure and training funds that have been given by the by the state. And so we are investing in some new warmers and some new kitchen equipment to make sure our kids get warm food uh uh and that we have the best equipment possible to serve our children. Um, and of course, we're also looking at training staff and improving our recipes. And also, we're taking a a a dive into like the foo- food waste disposal. Trying to figure out a way to really separate the waste uh in in the best way possible. And and finally, the wellness committee, uh being active participants in the wellness committee. We heard uh public comments about that today and of course, we want to make sure that that's also being carried forward. So that's my, that's the departments uh and we're happy to take questions.
Um, well, thank you for such a great report. My only question is that for the grand lawn, is it going to have artificial turf? And instead of like right, the regular grass grown?
No, it's gonna have uh the regular grass.
Oh, so be finished like that and by August twenty twenty-five, okay?
Yes.
Um, well, yeah, that's, that's all. Thank you.
We're really excited about that, actually. It's gonna look beautiful.
Sooner? I thought the grand lawn was gonna be sooner than.
Well, it the, we're, we're aiming towards in the summer of twenty twenty-five. So depending on some things, we don't, yeah, it's, we, that's why we just say summer of twenty twenty-five.
And ten, oh, and also, um, actually, is the graduation going to be moved to the great lawn after? Or would it be staying back at the football field?
I mean, it it's something that we will talk about uh for sure. Um, I know that it's worked really well. Um, with the number of people that there we, there are no restrictions to how many people come, so.
And also like safety issues. Yeah, I know. Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
I just wanna thank you because I know that tonight is your last meeting with us.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
You are one of the people who has helped me be a better board member. And you, I asked you a thousand questions, maybe more, and you answered all one thousand of them. And I thank you. You helped me be better. And um, I appreciate you. And I think that you symbolize our potential and our goodness and. Having you around has been a pleasure and I consider you a colleague and a friend. And I wish you all the best in your next chapter and I hope that number one, you won't forget us. And number two, you'll always know that you have a home in Beverly Hills.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Thank you.
You see that sign up there? It says mission and vision excellence. And I have to tell you, since you've been with us, we have had nothing but excellence in our business department. And for that, you are to be so highly complimented. You have been a pleasure to work with. I'm gonna miss you. And I hope you all the best of success in the future. And as I once said to you, the best recommendation is. Your job is waiting for you when you come back.
Thank you. That's very kind. Thank you.
I echo sentiments of my colleagues and thank you so much for all that you've done and uh I know we'll continue to hear from you and I I know you'll do really well wherever you go. We will miss you for sure.
Thank you so much. So we have tomorrow, we're gonna be meeting and having a a a nice conversation and I've said goodbye to you, I think now, five times at different meetings. And it's, it's a really, it's a tough one. Um, I I learn from everyone. Um, I've learned more from you. Rafael is our our CBO and Assistant Super Business and I I really feel like the way you've restructured the department, you've really set us up for success. And so. For for many people in this room that would all love the opportunity to say thank you and and goodbye, everybody will be able to do that in their own way. Um, you know, this is, it's still something that I told you just, I thi- I think it was yesterday, that just I'm still trying to get my head around. That this is all happening and uh we're very happy for you, but we're gonna miss you here in our district, so. We'll stay in touch.
Thank you so much and and thank you. And I just wanna say, you know, it's, it's really, I appreciate all the words from everyone. It's, it's been a. Fantastic time here. Uh, I appreciate the leadership of our board, Dr. Braggie, your inspiring leadership. Every, everyone, our executive team, all of our team, and then my specific team, you know, Mr. Kenneth Allen Haas. Mr. William Karats, Ms. Uh, San, Ms., yeah, Nazon, N- Nijona, Sandy Sosie. Ms. Maludia Arcos, you know, all of our directors, like, they're fantastic. And if if anyone deserves the credit, it's them and and all the work that they've done as well. It's been fantastic and I'm I'm just appreciative for everything you guys do. And um, yeah, I I just, I I can't, I don't wanna take any more time because it's already like eight twenty. But thank you all so much. I really appreciate every one of you.
Thank you. And so I'll just wrap up with, um, you know, we've talked for many years, um, that a a person without data. Is just another person with an opinion. And so, um, we we've spent a lot of time over the last several years. Um, looking at data. As a school district, you know, we have it all. We have, we're resource and data rich. And what's really changed for us and our team is not just that data that's out there, it's it's how you use it. And I can tell you. With all confidence that that each year that goes on, the the data that we have isn't just the numbers. It's about how you use it, how you look at accountability, how you come up with strategies. This plan is a, is another really good. Um, way to memorialize how we've come as a school district when we look at this data and our action plans. And I I. While we we look at this accountability piece. Each year, this trickles down to our, you know, if there's levels, you know, to the school principals and then to our teachers. In our classrooms. And I think that each year that moves on, that again, it's, it's we're actually having conversations about the data and how to improve. So it isn't just the data that's out there. It's now a full conversation with each school in our community, but also at a district level too. And so I'm really excited about this year, this plan as we move forward. Um, I know that there may be some feedback about some information that you've had tonight. Uh, we'll have another opportunity to um to read again. Um, and uh and and we will uh be able to continue to work forward um uh on this plan and to continue to improve.
Um, okay, so our strategic plan, that was um an amazing amount of information, analysis, intelligence, commentary. We do have more. Um, in the interest of time, and it's my bedtime, so, just kidding. Um, we're gonna continue with the. Uh, security aspects, which of course by no means is less important, but something we're gonna do when we next meet.
Right, unless Mark.
Wants to.
Wants to. Do you, how how long, I just wanna gauge some time here.
Better be longer than that. No, okay, yeah, I I think we, I think we should round it out if that's okay.
I was just reading the room, so.
He wants to present on security. Is that okay with you? Well, it's getting late.
I know.
I know.
Yes.
Yeah, so, uh, Mark, if you wanna, we could always come back to with some additional information. So, Mark, if you want to.
Thank you, Mark.
Alright, everyone. Thanks for having me here at the end. Um, each year we have three goals typically. Uh, the first year, uh, we reviewed and revised our s- uh, safety plans. Last year, we did the emergency operations plan. This year, we're looking to review our security policy manual. It was one that was done by an. Outside vendor about three or four years ago. Um, so the former security team. So we think it's time to review it, revise it. Um, and have a process that includes our partners, our C S E A union uh folks, um, H R and obviously site admin at the sites. That didn't happen in the last version. It's a pretty good version, but it needs some revision, some customization. So we're gonna review and go through a year-long process of talking about that. We're gonna have monthly um meetings with the um security team as we did last year. We'll still do tabletops, but we wanna also focus in. On the security policy manual articles. So we're gonna spend some time to review it there. Uh, most of it, our team knows and is really great about, but there are some unique things in there. Um, that I think need to be addressed directly, um, both for uniformity and also sometimes for improvement. And then lastly, um, we're gonna work on um our radio protocols as a district. That can be technological. It also is site-based and district-wide. We wanna integrate a lot of our radio communications through the command center, which makes sense, acting something like a dispatch, um, which it already does to a degree. So this is to take, um, you know, uh, industry norms and to make them even more a part of our training and practice throughout um our sites and as a district. So our three goals, basically, the security policy manual review. Um, and it's not just a review, it's a revision. Uh, we're rewriting it. Um, we're not completely revamping it, but it is a proper revision and rewrite. Um, and to go through a year-long process of review um with our partners. Uh, the monthly meetings with the guards, which will be both. For reviewing these articles, but also for um training purposes and calibration. And lastly, to review um our two-way radio um usage. Including technological things, um. The actual equipment itself. And finally, um, how and how we're going to collect data and use that for further discussions. So those are the three goals that we're looking at for the year. You're welcome.
I'm looking forward to seeing all the new ideas you have and advancements, so thank you.
Great, thank you.
No comment other than thank you.
Pleasure.
Actually, I do have one question. Um, you know, it's been an interesting transition into El Rodeo.
Yes.
Um, and and um, I just wanna make sure all the kids are super safe and sound. We had an incident outside of B V, you know, with the car. A student with somebody's car, you know what I mean? And so I just wanna ask you if you can assist in that term in in regard to that kind of security control too. I just really wanna make sure the outside is super smooth and super efficient so that. When the kids are coming and going, they're safe.
Absolutely. Um, I've been there quite a bit in the last couple of weeks, so I've been able to see um. A lot of what's happening on the inside and outside. I think um drop-off has gotten pretty smooth. Um, I think pickup, we're getting there.
I'm sorry, you're talking about B, B V M S?
We're talking El Rodeo, correct? Yeah, yeah. Um, I I think, you know, like, we, there's a lot of habits to build, right? Something as simple as do T K and K. Separate at the main gate when they're getting dropped off. Like, it's still the same gate, but if the T K and K go through the right gate. And one through five go through the other gate, it makes it really easy for whoever's working out there to make sure those little ones go up tho- those stairs in the right way. So that's just a muscle memory thing. It only took a few days and part of it is like the kids learning to separate from the parents at a certain spot so they don't congregate. So those kinds of things are smooth and they're happening fast. Um, I think there's a couple of improvements that we're going to be making regarding the use of gates. Um, we think we may have another gate that's going to be accessible soon and usable. Um, how we're gonna use it, I think I need to work with the site. Um, but I think there's a little pressure release there um coming. May, might be a little, but it might be more than a little. Um, and also, um. Efficiency of the car line. Um, I think that's, that's probably the most pressing one. Um, we have. Three different things I think we're intending to look at to relieve that soon. Um, two are technological. Yeah, you're welcome. So, um, I was there today, uh, Sarah and I are talking about it and I I. Some of it's habits and practice, um, but I do wanna say our partners have been awesome. Um, the crossing guards have been great. They're, they've given us, um. They're all great, but you know, some are like more vigorous. We make sure we got the right people for that spot. And then, um, also, I think our traffic officers have been stupendous. So, um, all in all, I think it's working. And I noticed today, I think there's a new no left turn sign. Um, and it with the intent to keep the traffic going through and that seems to help as well. You're welcome.
And you did bring up, uh, Mrs. Mancheri about um just after-school B V M S. And so we were. Right on the scene after there was an accident with um a young man on, you know, it's electric bikes. It's electric scooters and I would just say, parents, um, one day, follow behind. Um, I take Charlieville all the way up from where I live and um it is horrifying. It is. So, and there's uh, you know, very little that we can do with that. Um, you know, we will. Uh, continue to work with the police department about awareness and about safety. Um, I will say, most of our kids are wearing helmets, which is really great. It, that's helpful. Um, but these scooters and these bikes move really, really quick and um, you know, after school when. When people are trying to use every back alley or or, you know, any, any way to get through and around, they will. And those areas are so close to the sidewalks that, I mean, there's just near misses all the time. Um, you know, and this was an incident that happened not only with one of our students, but another parent that had just picked up their child. So. It's everybody trying to get somewhere really quick before or after school.
Yeah, and five minutes later, there's nobody's there.
Gone. It's an empty.
It's a frenzy. It's almost like if you could stagger it, it would be amazing. I don't know.
Well, I have to tell you, I was up there at El Rodeo and I just don't wanna speak too long here, but the number of parents. Walking their kids to school the first week was amazing. I was worried about the car line. Well, it wasn't a car line, it was the crossing of. All these people at the, into the entranceway. It was amazing. And I just need to say that I, it, the police department, the crossing guards. Everybody was fabulous in getting it going and keeping it going. And I really, uh, and I do remember that policy. Cause I was there during those days when we did it with another company, whatever, and I think I finally threw it out. I think I finally threw it out, because I never knew if we'd ever use it. There was about seventeen chapters or something like that. We did it in chapters. So you've got your hands ready to, if you had it.
You're talking about the security policy manual. Yeah, yeah, it's not, it's not small.
Good luck. Nice to see you, and thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I just want to thank you again, because I know that when we've, you know, when we've had some real tensions in our society in general with the, you know, the protests and things like that, I know that you were really vigilant for the end-of-year ceremonies, and, you know, no news is good news, and so, you know, while it's not something that we're always talking about, we, I'm very aware and grateful that, you know, knock on wood, things have been pretty secure. And, you know, in today's world, we're always going to worry, you know, and there's a lot of different angles of security, but I think that it sounds like you're comprehensively looking at all angles, and I do appreciate that, so thank you.
Yeah, and the community partners, Sean and Ryan from the command center, the amount of hours they put in. Our, our security officers here with BHUSD were outstanding that day. And as to, it was just a real partnership with a bunch of people, and yeah, I'm real proud of how we did in those end-of-the-year things.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you all.
So that concludes our.
Yeah, so we're, we're able to take some feedback from you. I had also sent the board a note, I think it was yesterday, just wanting to take the stress and pressure off of you to have to give all of that feedback right now, and that we would come back and we'd be happy to meet with you as well to get some additional feedback.
Okay, we do still have.
I believe that I sent it out for next.
Next open?
Is that next week?
It was definitely next week.
You mean the deadline to get you the feedback?
Or just, just an opportunity for us to meet again? Yes.
Okay, that's a larger discussion. I have to decide, think about when we can meet. I'm not sure.
Yep, I sent it to you. I think it was next Tuesday or Wednesday.
I, I could go either way, Mandy. For example, if you're working next week, I'm ready. I can give my suggestions for your consideration, or we can meet again, whatever you want, and I can be pretty quick about it.
Okay, let's hold that thought for a bit. We have some other items of business we have to get through tonight, quite a few, actually. But thank you for that. I, I mean, that's, next week sounds great, but, let's see. Can I get a motion for? Oh, it's informational, okay. Okay, item 11A, I'll make a motion for the approval of collective bargaining agreement between the BHUSD and the BHEA instructional assistance 2024-2027.
I'll second.
Okay, can you second?
You can, you can, you can second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye, opposed. Okay, motion carries. Okay, I'll second. All in favor? Aye, opposed. Motion carries. I'll make a motion for the approval and presentation of the 2023-2024 unaudited actials. Okay, all in favor? Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Oh, wait, and it's actually a presentation, okay. You're pre-approved. Don't take it, don't take it personally, Rafael.
Why can't we go on and do the next one while they're just setting that up?
That's fine.
I make a motion for the resolution of the 2024-2025-2 adoption of the GAN limit.
All second. All in favor? Aye, opposed. Motion carries. I'll make a motion for the approval of AB 1200, public disclosure of proposed collective bargaining agreement, BHEA IA unit.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor? Okay, motion carries. Okay, and we are ready to back, well, we're, we're going to go back to his, yeah, okay, go ahead, Rafael, for.
Thank you, and I'll be as quick as I can be here. So the unaudited actials, you know, if we could display it on the screen there, but I'll just, I'll keep going. This is the portion of our budget where we're looking at where we actually ended the year. And so, okay. Doesn't look like it's sharing, one second. Sorry. All right, here we go. All right, so the unaudited actials report contains information regarding the district's actual expenditures. This is where we ended the year. So when we did the budget, we gave you an estimate of where we were going to be at. Now we're showing you where we actually ended, and so that is due to Laco by September 16th. So we're really early on this, and that's good. Our property taxes went up from 65.9 million to 68.5. Our total enrollment went slightly down from 3103 to 3041. Mind you, that's at Seabed's Day, so that doesn't account for like what happened later in the year. General fund salaries went slightly down from 50.2 to 49.9. That's because of some of the attrition items and retirements, as well as some reductions in management that we saw last year. Per student, general fund expenditures went up from 29,000 to 31,179, is what we're seeing in the unaudited actials. How is every dollar broken out? Well, 72 cents of our revenues come from local Beverly Hills property taxes, 20 cents from other local revenues, 6 cents from other state of California funds, and the federal government gives there 2 cents. General fund expenses, 75 cents of our general fund expenses are employee salaries and benefits. 3 cents are for books and supplies, 20 cents are for services, such as insurance, utilities, and finally, 2 cents are for deferred maintenance and future liabilities, as well as our technology refresh fund. So here's the actual numbers that you want to take a look at, what the differences were. So in our revenues, we actually saw about a million dollars more in revenues. And the majority of that has to do with the increases to, we saw some increases to state lottery. We also saw some increases to our sped funding and some interest income increases, as well as some recognition of some billbacks that we hadn't recorded yet. Our property taxes, that one came in lower. However, we did get the property taxes in late July. We got about 588,000 in property taxes, so although this is showing a negative $400,000, we did get it in late July. However, those came in commingled with the 2425 property taxes, so we decided to just leave that for the 2425 books. But basically, overall impact, about a million dollars better. When it comes to the expense side, most of our projections were pretty on point with certified and classified and employee benefits. We did see kind of a bigger change in benefits of 850,000 less than what we projected. Most of that was due to cleanup of HCM. We cleaned up some of the balance sheet accounts of that transition. So now that should be pretty clean moving forward. When it comes to the other bigger item of reduction that we saw was services, that came in at about $900,000 lower than anticipated. I just want to thank all of our departments that really, from second interim to the end of the year, really kind of did everything they could to cut costs. Amongst them was our sped department that really kind of tinkered down and, and saved us some money there, so thanks to them, as well as all of our other departments. Really, it was, this involves all, all departments have services. And so really was a cohesive effort to really reduce that cost. Capital outlay, that went down by about 573,000. That's basically because we are working on those projects, but we haven't been billed. So those bills will come in in 2425, and that's why you're seeing that, but you're just going to see an increase in 2425 to account for that difference. All in all, basically, you're looking at a $3 million, close to $4 million increase in regards to what wasn't spent in expenditures. What is, how does that impact your budget? Well, you really want to look at your unrestricted ending fund balance. That's the four, one, two, three, four, fourth line of your ending fund, unrestricted ending fund balance. You had 22.1 is what we estimated we were going to end at, but we actually ended at 25.1 million. That's about a $3 million difference, so we're looking $3 million better than what we anticipated at the estimated actials. Your Fund 17 has grown a little bit because of interest income. It's now at 10, 10.8 million in Fund 17. Your tech plan is now at a million dollars, yay, tech plan, million dollars. Fund 17.2, your liability account, that's at about 2.6 million. All in all, your reserve went from 34% to 37%, but mind you, you know, this does not account for like the new 10 and a half percent increase. That happened in 2425, so you'll see those impacts there. Next steps that we, or we have all of our other funds that you could see all ended in the green, or yellow in this case. 1.3 million in cafeteria funds, so we had no contribution to our food services cafeteria fund. Our deferred maintenance fund ended with about $264,000. Our special reserve fund, our Fund 17, we talked about, all in all, it's at 14.4 million. Our bond fund is at $156 million, is where we ended. Our Fund 25 ended at about 2.5 million. Our Fund 35, which is the state-sized regurgitation funds, that ended at about 16.4 million dollars. All that is budgeted, by the way. Fund 67 is pretty much flat from what we had. It was at $480,000. Fund 71, our OPEB fund, has grown into 7.7, and I want to thank the board for that. That's very smart investing to have the OPEB fund at this, at this high rate. So 7.8, close to 7.8 million. And finally, next steps, board approval of the unaudited actials report. Our first interim will come to the board on December 10th, and you'll see some major adjustments to that, because we had some addition of FTEs and things of that nature, but we also had an increase to our reserve, so both of those will help, help offset each other. So some of the increases that we saw in FTEs will be offset by some of the decreases that we saw in the expenditures and increases that we saw in revenue. So that will help offset some of the costs that we would have had to have cut perhaps in, in the future years. So that's all really good news for us, and of course, we will make the appropriate property tax revenue adjustments in fiscal year 2425. But that's about it. Sorry that it went so fast. I hope I didn't go too fast. So turning it back to you.
Thank you for your wonderful report. No comments.
Thank you.
As usual, spot on.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I make a motion to approve the presentation and the presentation of the 2023-2024 unaudited actual.
All second. All in favor? Aye, opposed.
Thank you.
Motion carries.
Motion to ratify an agreement with the Nazarian Group for miscellaneous work at El Rodeo Elementary School.
All second.
I have a question. Can someone tell me a little bit about what that miscellaneous work was for the benefit of the public?
Of course, thank you, and that's an excellent question. You know, we, basically, we had some extra work that needed to be completed really quickly at El Rodeo. It included the six grommets and countertops, plastic covers. We also purchased the AED covers that we needed, and cabinets, and the AED cabinets at the El Rodeo site. It also included a patch of concrete in the basement on the stairs in the kiln room, and it also included raising the electrical and data at three different wall locations that we needed. So it's miscellaneous work that we needed completed, that wasn't part of the scope of Pro West. And so we had the, this group come in and help us with completing these projects, because again, it fell outside of the scope from Pro West, so. Yes, it was, it was paid for with bond funds, but again, it was for like the countertops, the AED cabinets and the defibrillators that we needed, the patch of concrete in the basement at the stairs and in the kiln room, as well as the electrical and data that we had to raise and some of the walls that we had. Of course, thank you.
Yes, all in favor? Opposed, motion carries.
I make a motion for the approval of amendment number one to the agreement for professional services with C Financial Investment and Company Incorporated for project tracking and reporting services for the district's bond program.
All second. All in favor? Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
I will make a motion for the approval of the amendment to number one to the agreement with Hancock Park, Hancock Park and Delong for school facilities grant and consulting.
All second.
Of course. So Hancock Park Delong does, so if you, if you recall, for our bond program, we, we talked about there being like a $15 million amount that we have to come up with. We are able to tap into state modernization dollars that are available to us for specifically the high school. There's about $20 million available there. In order to do so, we have to submit applications to the state for modernization. Hancock Park Delong does that for us, and they work with us to make sure that it's all submitted correctly, and that we also do everything we need to do to send that to the state, to OPSC, and to the different agencies that have to approve this. They help us track it, and so they're very integral to that portion. It's a very technical kind of forms, and that's what they help us with. We are waiting for 2025, as soon as we can. In 2025, that will be submitted, so they're, they're very close to that. Yep, and of course, they also look at any other types of funding that we could look into for the bond program.
Yes, all in favor? Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Brings us to, can I, I'll make a motion for the acceptance of the completed El Rodeo School flagpole and concrete monument project with Garza Construction and authorization to file the NOC and release retention. Okay, all in favor? Opposed. Motion carries. Brings us to last item of business.
That's a discussion. So, so this item is just to get some board feedback about just a request to provide some additional information regarding what's happening in our schools, and just, there's some data that needs to be collected. And so I just wanted to make sure that, that when, when I'm compiling some information, that I get everything from, from the entire board, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, so, I mean, you can email me if there's some additional information you want, but it's on here, because this is going to take a lot of time to put together, and so I want to make sure that I get everybody's input.
Thank you so much. Are you looking for some direction first?
Well, I want to make sure that I meet like what, what you're looking for.
Thank you so much. I asked for this because I think like a year ago, I was trying to understand what kind of supports are we providing to our students, and I'm very grateful, of course, to both Norman Aid and Bulldog Aid, especially because I feel like following COVID, they were triage centers in some ways, you know? But as time goes on, from the triage centers, we, we see that the ed code is requiring us to handle and respond to the kids in certain ways and with certain professionals and in-house detentions and things like that, and so there's kind of like this one silo, which is the behaviors, and then we have another silo, which is the emotional supports and wellness. I think that we got a lot of really good information from the review of, the recap of the strategic plan back in, in May. And then again, we recently had a discussion when we authorized the four individuals coming from the student services department. So now I want to take it a step further to figure out, well, what's happening at both Norman Aid and Bulldog Aid? I have this paperwork that you had kindly provided me some months back, when I, when I had asked, well, what's going on there? You can see that their wellness programs are fun and interesting and relevant to the kids, but I'm trying to figure out what's happening on a day-to-day basis with the staff there and the interns there. And so I'll share with you my couple of questions, and I'm open to my colleagues and their thoughts about my questions. My questions are, number one, are the students missing class time to be there? Because I have heard that that happens. And so I do love that it's a place where the kids feel really comfortable to go and lamp out, and, you know, they're maybe going there for popcorn, and then they get their popcorn, and it gives them an opportunity to seek support. And so I appreciate those in. And so I appreciate those informal roads, you know? But on the other hand, as we're focusing on academics and as we're focusing on the kids not roaming the halls, I also want to make sure that it's not being misused, yeah, abused, exactly, you know, and disrespected. So that's number one, and then I'm trying to understand what are the current rules? Um, you know, are, are what we're paying them market? Is it appropriate? Have we taken a look at it? Um, is there overlap be- between the roles? Are the roles like administrative or are they student-facing? Um, and then, you know, the lawyer and me wonders like, okay, we've got these interns here. Well, who's supervising the interns? I saw the picture. It looks like we have a lot of interns. Um, is each of those interns coming a couple hours a day? Um, and really, how many kids are seeking services? And I don't mean how many kids are stopping by. I mean, how many kids are seeking services? You know what, you know what I'm saying? It's not the same thing. Um, and so I just want to get a better handle on what's happening. Are the sup, are this, are the interns supervised? Are they, are they licensed to be there? Um, are we serving the interns or are the interns serving us? So those are my questions for now.
Got it.
And I say that with respect to everybody in that program because I know that everybody's here in the best interest of the kids. I'm just trying to figure out, okay, but what are we doing? And to me, that's something that would go for both Norman Aid and Bulldog Aid.
How about the elementary school?
Well, the elementary schools, we don't have wellness centers yet. I.
But we do have support.
We do have support, exactly, and so that's different because the support at the elementary schools is a decision that's made between teacher, parent, principal, assistant principal. So, so that's something that's directed in more on a needs basis. This is.
It is still considered.
Yes, yes, but those are not, those are not part of Bulldog Aid and Norman Aid.
More interested in the whole school than that.
Yeah, because I, in my opinion, from what I can tell, the services that we're, we're providing separately from the licensed professionals, we really need those because ed code is tying our hands in a lot of way of how we can respond to the students and behaviors and situations. So we have to have those in place.
Yep.
So, thank you for your consideration.
Anything else, um, you can certainly email me, uh, if you have any questions or if there's any other data that you're looking for.
Okay, thank you for that. I'll be curious to see that as well. Um, moving along to communication from board members, meeting reports.
Nothing at this time, thank you.
I don't have communication, but I do have a little bit of feedback in regard to the strategic plan. And so what I would say is, if I'm the only one, I could run through it really quickly.
Can I recommend, so that we give it its proper airtime, but we do that because we are trying to set up, um, a, a very soon, likely Wednesday.
I just want to be respectful of everybody's time, so if it makes sense to pull in the whole cabinet again, then I'll do it. If not, you know, I'm open to whatever.
I don't necessarily think tonight.
Yeah, I know, it's late.
We, we had suggested.
Yes.
Yeah, well, we want to be fresh to hear it too. So, um, we, we had suggested a Wednesday, the fourth, um, maybe at three o'clock, if that's.
Next Wednesday?
Yeah, if that works and I'll check with Mr. Margot.
I'll double check too. Thank you.
Okay, great, all right.
And if not, we'll come up with an alternative time. No, we will, we'll make sure that we get a time where we can all meet.
Sure, I mean, if you, if you want us.
But not today?
Yeah, I get you.
Okay, um, any other things you'd like to share?
Uh, I just, in the interest of time, I'm going to pass, I just want to mention that I, one little thing about the, um, uh, Health and Safety Commission, they had a speaker yesterday speaking on the menopause and hormone health and it was interesting that was a former, another former student of mine, Suzanne Gilbert Glenns, who is a, uh, MAC doctor and an obstetrician-gynecologist, but it was on menopause and hormone health, very interesting. And then I want to remind everybody that on September fourth, the, uh, there's a wellness committee from the, uh, city, well, less is more is doing something with the, um, uh, wellness. It's going to be on, uh, media safety and it's, everybody's invited to it. I believe Dr. Brege is going to make a few opening comments. Uh, it was an idea brought by, uh, the commissioner, the, um, chair of the Health and Safety Commission, Erica Felsenthal, but it was taken over by the city. But it is going to be very interesting and I invite everybody to, we, it's at city hall now, so please make, put it on your calendar and attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to remind people that on October sixth is the Not Today Cancer Run, uh, which has happened now for several years and it's gotten increasingly more, um, popular and it was started, uh, by a family who tragically lost a son, Mason, to leukemia several years back, but it has grown into something that is actually helpful towards better pediatric medicine for cancer treatments and it's a great opportunity to get out there, even if you just want to donate in, um, volunteer hours or money and not even run, or you want to run, or all three. Um, you can certainly do that and that's at nottodaycancer.org, I believe. Um, and if you need any, uh, if you have any questions, you're welcome to ask me. A lot of board members are aware of this and that's all I have to say. Thank you. Okay, and with that, we adjourn. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Um, I'm going to send a quick email just to see who can.
Okay, got it.